Welcome to the February 24th, 2025, meeting of the Long Meadow Select Board. This is Select Board Chair Veneeth Hamavati. I will be confirming that all members and persons anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me. Members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Dan Zorko? Dan, are you with us? Hand up. Andrew Lamb?
Here.
Mark Gold?
Here.
Josh Levine?
Here.
Staff, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Lynn Simmons?
Here.
Mike Barbieri?
Here.
This open meeting of the Long Meadow Select Board is convened in person and via Zoom webinar as posted on the agenda and town's website, identifying how the public may join. There's no chat or Q&amp;A function. All the materials for this meeting are available on the agenda posted on longmeadowma.gov. The public is encouraged to follow along using the posted agenda unless I note otherwise. This meeting will feature resident comment. For residents attending the meeting in person, please raise your hand when we get to the comments section of the meeting, and I will call on you to approach the microphone. For residents participating in the meeting via Zoom webinar format, please use the raise hand icon at the bottom of the screen. The meeting moderator will promote you to panelists, unmute you, and give you permission to speak. If you join the webinar by phone, dial star nine to raise your hand and star six to mute, unmute. Residents who wish to speak will identify their names and addresses only. Each individual is afforded three minutes for comments. Please note that this meeting is being recorded and that some attendees are participating by video conference. Please remember to mute your phone or computer when you are not speaking. If anyone in attendance is recording this meeting, please announce yourself now.
Sarah Heenan in Reminder Publishing.
Thanks, Sarah. And now, we will move on to the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, and we will move into Select Board announcements. Annual Town Meeting is set for May 13th in the Long Meadow High School Gymnasium. Budget presentations will be held at the Select Board's March 10th and March 24th meetings, and the board will vote to close the final warrant on April 7th. For additional information, please visit longmeadowma.gov/talmeting. Nomination papers are available for the June 3rd Annual Town Election. Residents interested in running for elected office may obtain nomination papers by contacting the Town Clerk's Office at townclerk@longmeadowma.gov or 413-565-4103 to schedule an appointment. Find additional resources and view the full election calendar of important dates and reminders at longmeadowma.gov/elections. Residents and businesses are reminded to please, are reminded, please, to clear snow and ice from sidewalks within 24 hours after the precipitation ends. Please use an ice-melting compound and/or sand where necessary to ensure the sidewalk is safe for pedestrians. If you have a fire hydrant adjacent to your property, please ensure that it remains fully accessible after snowstorms. For additional information, please visit longmeadowma.gov/civicalerts. The Town of Long Meadow is seeking your assistance in creating the cover to the 2024 Annual Report. Please submit this, please submit your original photo or drawing by March 14th at noon for a chance to be featured on the cover of the Annual Town Report. For additional information and guidelines to submit, please visit longmeadowma.gov/civicalerts. And that is it for Select Board announcements, and we can now move into resident comments. Anyone here for resident comment? Anyone online, Mike?
I do not see anybody.
No? Okay. No resident comments, all right. If there are no resident comments, then we will go ahead and move into Select Board comments. Anybody would like to make a comment? Mark?
Yeah, thanks. A couple of things. At the last meeting, I commented about the increase in medical insurance premiums from the MIA, which is the Mass Interlocal Insurance Agency, and also the GIC, which is the government insurance company. Over the last couple of weeks since we've met, the Scant and Scantic Valley Regional Health Trust, which Long Meadow remains a, is a member, has also met. If you recall, the MIA rates were going up an average of 14.8%, ranging from nine to, I think, maybe 18 or 19%. And the GIC is rates, GICC rates, were going up a little bit over 10% on the average. Happy to report that Scantic Valley Regional Health Trust, and we kind of alluded to this, has approved the rate increase for next fiscal year of 4%. And I think that speaks to the benefits of us being part of the Scantic Valley, of Scantic Valley managing their own healthcare program. They, you know, this past year, the Scantic Valley Health Increase had a 0% increase in premium. And when I talk about premium increases, those are premium increases that are equal for the town and for our employees who are the members of that health group. So, you know, last year, their rates went up zero. They suspected, they expected to eat significantly into their, I'm going to call it surplus, but it's not really surplus, their funding. They did not eat into it as well as they, as much as they thought they would, and therefore they're very comfortable with this 4% rate increase. I think it's a real testimony to the community and what we can do as communities, and I want to thank the folks at Scantic Valley for doing a great job. I think it was really important. The other thing I wanted to just, two other things I was going to comment on. One is that there was just a reminder for everybody, all the residents, that there's an insert in the water bill asking for people and residents to fill out a survey about recycling trash bin sizes. It's really important to do that. We're kind of struggling on where to go and what to do, and I think it'll be very helpful to get the input of many of the residents of how big a trash barrel they want. There are, the barrels are available for people to see if they want to see the difference between a 48 or 65 and a 95-yallon barrel. They're available down at the DPW. But there's also some pictures in there with people standing next to them. Hopefully, you can see the 95 is pretty big. But if you could fill out the survey, that'd be great. Finally, I just want to point out to people that last week, the Division of Local Services, which is an agency of the Commonwealth, and I think they do a great job, sent out a pretty broad email to all of us, and it was their annual property tax summary bill. And, you know, we hear a lot of complaints and things about property taxes in Long Meadow, but it was interesting that this Commonwealth ranks Long Meadow 51st out of 351 cities and towns in the average property tax bill. So everybody says, "Our taxes are the highest in the state." They're not. They're 51st. That, that's pretty, pretty low. But more importantly, it also has a phenomenal chart that says, "What are taxes as a percentage of a resident's expendable income?" And Long Meadow ranked 301st out of 351. That's down 88% down the list. So there's 87% of the cities and towns in Massachusetts whose homeowners paying a larger percentage of their available tax, available income for property taxes. I know nobody likes property taxes. I don't like property taxes. None of us do. But I think when we all sit around saying, "Long Meadow's taxes are ridiculous, they're the highest in the state, they're this, they're that," they're none of the above. They're 51st in average tax bill, and, and they're 301st in the percentage that taxes are of, of a homeowner's expendable income, and I think it's important to communicate that. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Anyone else? Josh?
First, I just want to give a dispatch from the Middle School Building Committee. We are starting to consider at our monthly meetings a bit more of the nitty-gritty now that we're going forward with a, a general plan and place. So, for instance, last meeting, we were talking about color schemes, so, and bathroom design. So if people want to tune in, there, there's a lot of good visuals, and I thought it was, it's moving along. So you can get a, start to get a really good idea of what it's going to look like over there if we approve it this fall. So I would recommend people tune in or at least check out the agendas and the materials. And second, I just wanted to take a moment to comment on the Board of Assessors appointment from earlier this year. I really done my best to let this lie, but there have been weekly letters to the editor and the reminder, and blog and Facebook posts, and puning my character as well as other members. And I don't come to speak on their behalf, but I wanted to address what people are saying. The BOA vote to not appoint, reappoint Mr. Foster was framed two ways: an act of ageism or an act of revenge. Both are completely, absolutely false. I made my decision to appoint someone else based on feedback from town employees, which I will discuss shortly. But I, first, I want to make my, initially, I want to make clear that the decisions I make on the Select Board are for what I think is best for the town. I don't do this job for the glory or to push people around. I do this because I want to help our town and its residents. And given that duty, sometimes I agonize over decisions, and I did on the BOA vote. As for the vote in question, I thought some background would be useful. Long Meadow didn't have a principal assessor for two years before we hired Maria Cataldo in 2023. Principal assessor, it's an important job as resident point person for property valuations and abatements, among other duties. And it's really critical to have a principal assessor on staff, and we had a hard time hiring one. And Ms. Cataldo is doing a good job, especially in a time of rising valuation, which I just heard from Mark, we hear a lot about, that it's, prices go up and taxes go up, and so people have a lot of questions about that. And it's important to have a staff person in town to handle that. So when considering the vote for the BOA, for which there were two candidates, I reached out to the Town Manager's Office to ask how the board was functioning. And I was told about some incidents that were making Ms. Cataldo's job more difficult or causing undue burden on town resources. And I'm not going to be specific, so I'll just say, based on that conversation, I decided to vote for Mr. McLean. My comments before the vote, I could have been, my wording could have been chosen better, but I was trying to be diplomatic, and so for that, I do apologize if anyone took those in a way that may have hurt them. So I'm not planning to address this again, but I felt it important to set the record straight. So thank you.
Thank you, Josh. And then, Dan, anything? Sorry, you're muted. I don't think we can hear you still.
Dan, can yours okay? All right.
Yeah.
We're having issues here, and you're going to, I'm going to try to clear that up.
Okay. Well, we can come back to it if that's something. And so, comment from me, I've, over the last, you know, few weeks, have received tons of text messages, screenshots about Mass Priorities and all the ads that they've been running on Facebook. And so, you know, for those of you that don't know, Mass Priorities is this dark money PAC that's funded by Comcast, and they've been spending a tremendous amount of money in Long Meadow ever since we've been considering bringing municipal fiber internet to town. And, you know, lately, it's just been completely inundated on Facebook, on Instagram, other social media apps. And in looking at their advertising, they have spent $60,000 in advertising since the Fall Special Town Meeting. They spent about another $30,000 or $40,000 prior to the Fall Special Town Meeting. And, you know, I think by the vote that took place and the margin of that vote, I think folks had a good idea of what was going on here and could kind of see through it. But this is just to let folks know that, you know, we are aware of their efforts, what they're doing, and I think that folks still need to be vigilant and understand that there's going to be a flood of misinformation as long as this project is going to continue moving forward. And this is the same kind of tactics that we've seen in other communities. West Springfield has also felt the brunt of this for more than a year now. And, you know, we, for, for a company as big as Comcast, that's worth, you know, hundreds and millions of dollars, you know, $60,000 is a drop in the bucket for them. And so they're going to continue to do this just to see, you know, I think, A, to kill the project from happening here, and also to kind of kill this idea from, from spreading further out. So, you know, I do appreciate people reaching out about it and responding to it, and, you know, and we are aware of it. And then, I don't know if, oh, sorry. Oh.
Just briefly, I just want to acknowledge, I, and I'm sure my colleagues here have heard a lot about potholes in town. This is New England, it's the winter, but I know in particular, anyone who's driven down Shaker Road knows it's in rough shape. We are all very aware of this. I think Lynn is going to speak to this in her comments. I just want to acknowledge that many people have been heard and that we are working on it.
Thank you. Thank you. And, do we have Dan?
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can. That's good.
Can you hear?
Yeah, we can hear you. I think Andrew did a good job filibustering for you.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you. Did you have a comment? Oh, maybe not, he can't hear us?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. All right. You said, "Forget about it," I think. All right, we'll, we'll move along. So we'll now move into Town Manager's Report.
Thank you. So yeah, about potholes. So weather permitting, DPW is patching potholes. Pothole patching is primarily limited to cold patch this time of year, with the exception of Wednesdays. There's one hot mix plant open on Wednesdays, and the DPW is limited to three tons of hot mix, which fills their hot box and keeps the mix at an appropriate temperature so it does not set too fast. The exact amount of tonnage to patch Shaker Road alone, for instance, would be 80 to 100 tons, just to put it in context. Until the asphalt plants fully open in late March or early April, the DPW will continue to use cold patch to fix potholes. Cold patch does not last more than a few weeks, unfortunately. And as we all know, potholes are really typical in New England this time of year. The freeze and thaw that we've been experiencing as of recent creates the perfect conditions for potholes to develop. We encourage anyone to fill out a pothole report to thepublicworks@longmeadowma.gov. A work rule will then be created, and then the, the pothole crew will be dispatched to that location to address it. And along the same lines, this is related to Shaker Road because I know this is one of the worst roads in town. It's the one we get the most complaints about, and that we've all experienced pretty poor conditions there that will likely only get worse as the freeze-thaw cycle continues through the spring. But a road resurfacing scope has been finalized and is being ready to be put out to bid. This is for the large road resurfacing project that had been discussed by the Select Board and supported by the Special Fall Town Meeting in November of 2024. Ideally, a contractor will be onboard for the spring with work going through the fall of 2025. The explanation used for the road resurfacing article at the Special Fall Town Meeting this fall is included below in my report because it provides a brief summary of funding of road projects and the list of roads to be included in this upcoming bid. So I'll just read that briefly because I think it does a good job summarizing it. The town has a backlog of road resurfacing projects. The town annually funds roadwork with Mass dot Chapter 90 funds, approximately $480,000 a year, and capital improvement funds ranging from $340,000 to $740,000 a year. Needed roadwork greatly exceeds annual funding allocations. To make headway on the backlog of work, the DPW and Select Board developed a plan to address roadways that do not need imminent underground utility work. The streets to be paved include Shaker Road, Emerson, Cooley, Twin Hills Drive, Long Meadow Street from Bliss to Wheel Meadow, Bel Air Drive, Canterbury Lane, Grassy Gutter Road, Pondside Road, and other streets as funding permits. The roads listed have design completed and can be put out to bid very soon. So as I mentioned, it's about to go out to bid. Once we receive bids, an award will be made very quickly so that we can get this under contract to start this spring. News regarding the Assistant Town Manager. So as I had announced at a previous meeting, the former Town Manager Corinne Meise-Munz accepted a position with the state. The position was posted, interviews were conducted, and I'm really pleased to announce that-
Enter your meeting ID. Call and buy town.
I'm really pleased to announce the appointment of Mike Barbieri as the new Assistant Town Manager.
Has not entered any number. These free entries are moving on-
Mike has a strong background in municipal government, community engagement, and strategic planning. He brings valuable experience and leadership to the role. The Select Board staff and many community members have come to know Mike in his role as Executive Assistant to the Select Board and Town Manager. Mike's been an asset to the Town Manager's Office and has strengthened the communication efforts and strategies to keep residents informed. Mike regularly takes on tasks outside of his role to help support other town departments, including launching of electronic voting at Town Meeting and a new document management system for scanning and storing records digitally. I look forward to working with Mike in this new role, and I have no doubt he'll continue to be an asset to the town. The position of Administrative Assistant to the Select Board and Town Manager and the position of Associate Planner will be posted soon. Two other quick updates related to planning. Accessory dwelling units are allowed by right across the state. So as of February 2nd, the Affordable Homes Act came into effect across the state. The Affordable Homes Act mandates all Massachusetts communities to allow accessory dwelling units, or ADUs, by right in all single-family zoning districts, among other strategies meant to increase the development and affordability of homes. The Affordable Housing Act defines a, defines as a self-contained housing unit inclusive of sleeping, cooking, and sanitary facilities on the same lot as a principal dwelling that can either be attached or detached from the main housing unit and is not larger than half the gross floor area of the principal dwelling, or 900 square feet, whichever is smaller. Municipalities are able to prohibit ADUs from being used as short-term rentals. However, they are not allowed to restrict the use of ADUs as general rental units and cannot restrict occupancy by ownership, family ties, or age. Local municipalities are able to set design standards for ADUs within reason, and the Planning Board is currently reviewing a draft revision to the town zoning bylaw that would allow them to define and set standards for the construction of ADUs in Long Meadow. They are striving to bring this proposed revision to the Annual Town Meeting in 2025, and will be discussing this draft zoning in more detail at their March 5th meeting. And the 916 Williams Street Site and Design Review Application has been submitted. The town received it in the Building Department. This is for the parcel of land that's owned by Colvest Group and is currently occupied by the former Christian Science Church building. The proposal is to develop the 2.93-acre property at the northeast corner of the intersection of Williams Street and Redfern Drive. All materials are publicly located on the Active Case Files link on the Planning Department website. It's under a folder marked 2025, and then the address of 916 Williams Street. If you'd like, hard copies are also available in the Building and Community Development Department. If you have questions or comments regarding the proposed development, you can attend the Planning Board Public Hearing on April 2nd, 2025, or you can send correspondence to the Planning Board by emailing planningdepartment@longmeadowma.gov or sending actual mail to planningboard@231mapleroad.
Great, thank you. Andrew?
First, congratulations, Mike.
Thank you.
Everyone shares my congratulations, feelings of gladness that you have the role. Thanks.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Quick question about this, the limit of three tons of hot patch? Why is there a limit? Is it because that's how much the, the truck can hold, or the, like, can we get more, or is that?
No. It's restricted because there's one plant open and all the communities are using it. And additionally, our, our hot box trailer is limited on size as well. But you're also limited.
So it's rationed out, basically?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Josh?
Yeah, just wanted to comment in the LFD report that I was really pleased to see that the Fire Department's fully staffed, and I'm really proud that, of the work we all did on making our wages competitive so that we could make sure that we can stay safe. So that was, that was really great to see.
Select, Mark?
Yeah, Lynn, I have a few questions about the individual reports, if I could. The year-to-date expenditure report, which is a municipal report, why does it show that school department salaries are encumbered where town salaries aren't? What, what is it about school department salaries that causes them to, do we know why they encumber their salaries and we don't?
I don't have a thorough explanation for it. I know that that's what they do every year, but I don't, I don't know any more detail about that. School Department will be here March 10th for their budget presentation, so if you want, I can give them a heads up that-
Yeah, I might just, I mean, there's, there's got to be some policy. I don't know. The other thing is that, there's a comment about the fire engine, once again, having engine troubles. You know, if I owned a car that failed several different cars the same way, I'd probably stop either buying it or stop buying those engines. Do, do we have any policy that says we're not buying any more Cummins, Cummins engines in our trucks, or that's what comes and that's, we're kind of stuck with it? It seems to me that, you know, a diesel engine like that shouldn't, probably shouldn't fail the way that one did because dust or something got in the intake or something. I don't know, whatever the, it just surprised me that, that, you know, we just kind of roll over and say, "Well, that's, it's out of warranty, that's the way it goes."
Yeah, there is no policy that we're not buying that type of engine, but it, the entire issue that you just raised is, has been sent to Town Council.
Oh, okay. Couple of other things. There was, there was a line in the Park and Recs report that I just didn't understand, and maybe you can explain it. It says, "The half your salary and benefits payback for full-time daycare teachers, admin, extended admin, and half the assistant director is estimated $340,000 compared to $303,000 in 2024." It says, "Compared to 2024, we reassessed $21,000 more in salaries, more in health insurance." What, what does all that mean? I just didn't understand that at all.
I'll have to pull it up and read it in more detail.
Okay, yeah, I mean, you don't need to answer it right now, just get back to me. I'd appreciate it. The, the other thing I just would comment on, I was going through the budget, and, you know, as we move forward, now we're getting into budget season. In the past years, we deferred a lot of expenses into the Special Fall Town Meeting, especially capital, with the expectation that we could or might be able to use free cash to meet those expenditures. But this year, I think for the first time in five or six, certainly the likelihood on this board, we're likely to have a very significant need to use free cash to close the budget deficit in the snow removal line item. And people don't, may not know, but, but snow removal is the one line item you can intentionally deficit fund. The Town of Long Meadow throws $100,000 in there, and on an average year, it's $140,000 or $150,000, and this year, it's probably going to be four, five, six, who knows how many times that with the storms we recently have. And I think it's just to watch out until we know what that's likely to be, that we have to watch out saying, "Well, we'll, we'll have all this free cash in the fall that, that we can spend for other things to fill in budget gaps because we, in fact, may be spending a lot of money on doing, filling in expenses, expenses for a snow removal."
Ian, did you move your chair up here because you had something that you wanted to comment?
Yes, in response to Mark's question about the, of the amounts that Barry had pointed out. So that is part of a two-part indirect cost that I calculate for Parks and Rec, DPW, Fire during the year. So that includes health insurance, life insurance, Medicare, retirement, and then the salary reimbursement that comes out of the revolving fund. So those are at the same timeframes during the year. So one time in the first half and then assessed at the end of the year in June.
Okay, so when, when Parks and Rec wrote, "We were assessed," it was by the general government part of the town? Okay, I, that's what I-
No, that, that wording is confusing, yeah.
And I'm, just to clarify, too, that, that additional $21,000 in salaries, that is related to the Wage and Classification Study. That, the, the significant amount of those increases were for daycare positions.
That's great, thanks. That makes sense.
Yeah, Mike? Yeah, I just want to make sure everyone in the Zoom can hear us now.
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you, okay. Apologize, there may have been five minutes of no volume on our end, so good watch the recording tomorrow night, anyone in there.
Well, not exciting here.
And then, Dan, did you have something you wanted to say for Select Board comment?
I was, well, I was going to comment on, just, you know, on the roads, but I think Andrew did a good job handling that. I've been in contact with Lynn, as well as Sean, just to address a flurry of requests from, from residents, but thank you, Andrew, for covering that. And then, the only other thing I just wanted to acknowledge, Robin Prichet, so Robin Prichet is, was Representative Brian Ash's longtime aide for 12 years, and she did an excellent job over the past 12 years just servicing, you know, over 40,000 constituents in the Second Heaven District. And I, I had attended a, a retirement party last weekend, and I just, you know, wanted to, you know, offer her congratulations on retirement and, and thank her for everything she's done across the district.
Great, yeah, thank you. And of course, she had to fill your shoes.
Yeah.
Being legislative aide, yeah. And so, yeah, just a few comments from me. Thank you, I want to thank Josh for highlighting the Long Meadow Fire Department and them being fully employed. Last year, when we were having this conversation, Chief Dearborn basically said that this would be the result if we made these wage changes, you know, before- be the result if we made these wage changes, you know, before our firefighters were getting paid 10, 20,000 less than most of our surrounding communities and we were having to full-time, being fully staffed, paying out a ton in overtime to make up for that. So really pleased to see that, that, that change. Also, Shaker Road, this has kind of come up, you know, recently and, and it has been an ongoing concern in town. And, you know, I think this is exactly why, a year ago when we were kind of having this conversation, you know, I, I think I said, the town manager, DPW, you know, finance director, like, can we find some other way to invest in paving our roads because the way that we've been doing it has not cut it? And so last year at Fall, Fall Special Town Meeting, we made the biggest investment in road paving that we have in, you know, a long, long time. And so Shaker Road is at the top of the list of what we want to address and, and, you know, finally get to. So I'm glad that we did that and, you know, and folks just have to wait a little bit longer for, for this road to be paved. Also want to say congratulations to Mike for being named our new Assistant Town Manager. And I think that we are so lucky to have you step into this role, to have someone that has had all this experience, that knows everything so well in town, and this just seems like a natural progression, natural next step for you. And so we're really lucky that you have accepted this role.
Thank you.
So, thank you.
I appreciate it.
And then also I just wanted to mention too that in the DPW report, it's good to see that some of the ARPA funding that we kind of talked about at the end of December, the, the funding gap that we had that we wanted to close in some projects, that some of those projects are actually getting done right now. And so that's exciting to see. Yeah, Mark?
Just a question about ARPA. Are those funds in the town of Long Meadows hands? You know, I, so we already have those funds. So it's not some, okay, because I'm concerned that the government might hold back on ARPA funds and then we're stuck with it.
We received our town allocation two years ago.
Okay, that's fine.
And they've been held in account.
Thank you.
Great. So there's nothing further, we'll move on to old business. So we've got two draft meeting minutes from February 3rd and February 13th. Any comments or discussion about them?
I'll move, we approve the minutes of the February 3rd, 2025 Select Board meeting.
Second. Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
We have to roll.
Oh, yeah, roll.
Mr. Hemophyte?
Yes.
Dr. Lamb?
Yes.
Mr. Gold?
Yes.
Mr. Levine?
Yes.
Mr. Zwerko?
Yes.
Great, thank you. And then I will move to approve the draft meeting minutes from the February 13th, 2025 meeting of the Long Meadow Select Board.
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? Mike?
Mr. Hemophyte?
Yes.
Dr. Lamb?
Yes.
Mr. Gold?
I'm staying.
Mr. Levine?
I'm staying.
And Mr. Zwerko?
Yes.
Great, thank you. All right, now we can move into our updated Tree Management Bylaw Review, and I think we've got some folks from the Tree Committee here who could speak to that. So if you all want to perhaps move up to a microphone so that we can ask you all some hard-hitting questions. So while you guys are just getting settled in, just to kind of set the table for this discussion, this bylaw was voted down at our Fall Special Town Meeting, and I think we've had a couple of instances since that with Tree hearings that have really kind of highlighted the need for a bylaw like this. And so the Tree Committee, as well as the Tree Warden, have been looking into this and I think they've prepared a memo. And so I will turn it over to you if you want to talk a little bit about the memo that you wrote and, and want to talk about this.
My name's Kathryn Kupkev and I'm a member of the Long Meadow Tree Committee. We're very concerned about the fact that there is really no bite to any of the, any of the rules or regulations that are presented in the town tree manual. By putting the manual into the bylaws, we would have a little bit more to stand behind such things as fines and more substantial, I don't want to say punishments, regulations for people to follow when they're planting, taking down. And these are not meant to disturb the residents' trees. The residents' trees are looked as private and the things on the tree belt and, tree belt and certain public spaces are the ones that most of these regulations apply to. We would like to encourage planting of the proper types of trees so that, so much change with the environment has occurred that certain trees no longer can withstand either the weather or all the salt. And so a lot of the things in the bylaws could be better applied if we had some type of regulations in the town, in the town bylaws. We currently feel that perhaps we did not give enough consideration to the public when we presented the last set of bylaws at the town meeting and that people didn't really realize what was involved. We would like to take a chance, we would like to take the opportunity to give some, some...
Education?
Ah, good. Go ahead, Bill.
No, I think, I think it's very fine. I think we're sort of maybe politically naive or unaware, but I think we didn't realize that there would be a backlash to what was presented. And I think the thought is that we're going to be a little more proactive as we go forward here so that the, so that the public understands where we're coming from. So that's what...
And I think that the public might have misinterpreted some of the things as punitive. They're not punitive, we're merely putting into codification best practices for street trees, protecting the street trees, caring for the street trees, and selection of proper street trees. It's all we're doing. Both of these are already rules and regulations. We're just documenting it so that the town residents can see it, they can read it, the draft manual or the draft, the draft bylaw, it's very specific, it's applicability, it's administration, removals, tree plantings, and requests for prunings. As a matter of fact, this is actually more generous than most other towns because there is, there is a section here that allows the homeowner with the Tree Warden's permission to do pruning on themselves, which is not actually allowed under current Mass General Law Regarding Street Trees. So we're actually allowing the residents greater flexibility with Tree Warden approval and arborist oversight to trim trees on specific reasons in specific places if it's a town tree, so.
Just one, one additional point, Lou Cornet. So Mass General Law is 87, which this particular document refers to and falls under, did not give us, as indicated before, enough protection, we feel, for our trees. The basic tenants that we have running this Tree Committee and doing our jobs here is to protect and preserve the trees in this town. This is really needed for that. There is a lot of good education and information that has come to bear in the last few years that we really need to focus on, such as, I think you saw already on Long Meadow Street, all those boards hanging around those trees. There's, there's a tree legacy in this town and it's our role to really push for that, preserve those trees. Trees are living organisms, they last many, many years. What we have seen in the past and why we need these regulations are, you know, people planting the wrong type of tree. For example, a tree on a tree belt, like an oak tree, that they don't think 30 or 40 years down the road and know that that tree is going to go up and interfere with the power lines. Where does the responsibility lie on that? Right, right in your lap. So we have really taken the initiative to look at all the best practices, as Bill indicated, across the state. Many other communities in Western Massachusetts have adopted similar regulations, Northampton, I think, you know, a couple of other towns in this area as well. And the focus is really preserve, protect for not only today, but for the legacy we're passing down to, you know, residents often to the future. So as Kathy indicated, we're really working now on educating what's in this, which didn't happen before. So we have articles in the, coming out in the reminder, Long Meadow neighbors, we're really trying to educate people. There was a lot, eventually you know you're at the last meeting, there was a lot of black ink late at night and people really didn't get a good understanding of what this was all about. So our fault, we're going to really educate people about what the benefits and needs for this particular bylaws are.
I think, and did you have something else you were gonna add?
No.
Oh, okay.
No, I know, it's just...
Agreeing, yeah. Yeah, and I think, yeah, in the Chair, the Tree Committee's letter that you provided to us, not just the op-eds, but there's other specific outreach ideas that you've included in there as well for folks that are, you know, watching at home and want to check it out on the agenda. Josh?
Lynn, is there any bar on bringing back a bylaw, a general bylaw?
Not a general.
Okay. Am I correct that there's no change in this from when it was brought to the last meeting?
That, that's...
I think that's...
Yeah.
And I, someone's, we got opposed on someone, anything, I can't remember what. What was the issue at the last meeting? What, what were people saying?
There, there were a couple, and again, it was fairly one-sided. This time, of course, moving forward, we'll have people that will do a better job at presenting the plus parts. There was some misunderstanding, I think, about the, some of these bylaws impacting private property. Someone made a comment, they wanted to have their, put some siding on their house, they'd have to come to us. Not the case. You know, things of that nature. So mostly misinformation and just not fully understanding what this would accomplish and why. What's the intent? The intent is to preserve and protect our town trees, not my town trees, our town trees, and doing all that together.
So I've, I've learned a lot about trees in the last 30 years on, being on this board, some of which I didn't think I needed to know. But I, so what I am in, in favor of this, I, my concern is this, that I think it's hard to bring something, two meetings in a row and it's the same thing and people say, wow, well, we just voted this down, why are, why are we voting against it? And we've seen with other things, that's, zoning bylaws, when you want to change them, if you get rejected, you have a two-year waiting period and you can kind of retool and, as we saw with the church rezoning. So I, I am, I hope this gets passed because I, I think that it is important and it would help us in our hearings if we had guidelines we could point to and say, yes, this is what needs to be done and here we have a criteria for doing things that'll help our Tree Warden. So I, my only concern is that it, the education purpose or your, your ideas are really important and, but it's hard, it takes a lot of work.
I think one of the other issues that came up at the meeting was with respect to pruning. And I, I think that the bylaws go into that as well, I think, a little bit more explicit of what, what you can and cannot do. And many of these are state laws, you know, also, I was unaware that actually a citizen of Long Meadow cannot go out and plant any tree on their tree belt, just willy-nilly. I mean, that's also, so I think there's, there's an educational aspect to it, you know, but, but by and large, I don't think, there's not much of a change from what we're representing.
Yeah, I certainly don't impose...
Right.
Trying to put it on, I just, the method is really the key here.
Yeah.
Andrew?
Thanks for being here, thanks for doing your work. I, I reread this again and there's one that I, there's one section here, 9B, about construction activities within 50 feet of a town tree. And I think that when I just think about what people might question or might object to or worry about their own personal, like, home and how this could affect them and compliance with regulation, this is one question I was thinking maybe either, I'm curious, but also you might want to address at the meeting. So for example, it's basically saying that you have to have a tree plan submitted to the Tree Warden for any construction within 50 feet of a town tree. And as somebody, I read this, I think to myself, hmm, what if I wanted to do something on my house? Okay? And then I, how do I do a tree plan? So at first I was thinking, what does, 50 feet does seem quite distant to be affecting a tree. And then I thought, if I was working on my house, it really probably wouldn't affect me very much because these are usually at the tree belt as a setback, no problem.
Correct.
So then I'm thinking, what could possibly be near a tree? Well, maybe a driveway. And then I come back to 50 feet, like, is the 50 feet, which seems pretty far away from a tree, like, let's say I'm doing my driveway, 50 feet is distant from a tree, you know, that, that seems like, I'm not, I'm wondering why it's not like 10 feet, for example, or 15 feet, to my novice, like, mind. And then another question I have is, and I came up, I counted this a lot when I was on the Historical District Commission, like, the onus is on who to really know to, well, that this tree plan needs to be submitted? So for example, in the Historic District Commission, if somebody in the Historic District wanted to change their house, the building inspector would go, and it was kind of his role to say, hey, wait a second, you probably don't know about this Historic District Commission rule, because of course, you know, you're not expected to know everything about our bylaws and you really need to go get permission from them. I'm not going to expect an average homeowner to really know this section right here. And so who is going to, like, someone wants to do their driveway, I don't know if a building inspector goes and inspects that. I, I don't, so I'm wondering about compliance, just throwing this out here as to get your thoughts and like, just things that people are probably going to be thinking when they hear it again. Comments on that?
And Mr. Cor, is this what you were talking about when you gave the example of the siding?
Yeah, that, that fell under that, and I did question that myself and I wish our Tree Warden was here to give you the technical aspects of this, from my understanding, and I'll want to hear from the other folks too. One of the concerns, and you saw this on Long Meadow Street, with putting up those boards around those trees, impact to root structure is key and goes a lot further out than we would think. And my, I'm fairly new on this board, but I thought 10 feet sounds like, you can damage and kill a tree by doing extensive construction. And when I questioned this, I was told, it's really talking about major construction, digging primarily, or running heavy equipment over the root structure of a town tree. So that's what the impact is, and 50 feet, I believe, was an area that they would have around any tree that could be prone to any kind of root damage.
But do you feel like, so for example, let's say someone wanted to do the driveway, which is probably the most likely thing to encounter a tree belt tree within 50 feet. That would not, no, no Tree Warden would object to that because it's not deep enough, do you think?
I think when, when I did talk with Lynn about this and it was more around, you know, digging or running heavy equipment over the ground, you know, obviously a hard surface of a driveway would not, not fall into that particular area.
You mean, go ahead. So construction activities is defined in the, in the bylaws as disturbance of the ground by removal of vegetative surface, cover, or topsoil, grading, excavation, clearing, or filling.
So does that mean if somebody wants to actually make an addition on their house, but there's heavy construction running within 50 feet of a tree, then they would have to submit a tree plan? Is that what this is basically saying?
I'm reading that, yeah.
Good question.
So I just...
I don't, I don't think under the, I don't think so.
That's not what it's saying?
I don't think so, because construction activities, I, whether the heavy vehicles driving over it would impact the tree or not, I don't think that fits in construction activities. So that's certainly making a very good question.
I, I just wonder if you want to think about these and like, either, these are questions probably people are going to have or, or think maybe, and you don't want to be blindsided, I think, and maybe just either clarifying or reducing if possible, if the Tree Warden thinks it's reasonable, to something a little more proximal to the tree. Those are just some thoughts.
Appreciate it. Mark?
Yeah, I'm just reading that section 9B. It says, "A tree plan is required to be submitted to the Tree Warden prior to construction activities within 50 feet of a town tree." And, you know, when I did, redid my driveway, they take up the old driveway, go down three or four inches or whatever it is, and so based on definition of construction, that was construction. You know, I didn't happen to have a town tree, I must have had a town tree within 50 feet, I'm on a, I got tree belts. So, you know, in general though, what I've heard from people about this is that it's, it's 10 pages long and the homeowner is required to know it because otherwise they're going to get fined. And what they're looking for, I think, is three paragraphs or a page and a half, but not a 10-page document that has a lot of filler in there beside, here are the rules and regulations you need. And it would seem to me that the bylaws ought to be, here's what you must do before you do the following, not all the verbiage that we have here. Just imagine yourself as a homeowner and you've got... Just imagine yourself as a homeowner and you've got, and I think that's, that's what sunk this frankly, at the last town meeting, is people look at, it's 10 pages long and I'm not going to take the time to learn it, it's just too much. You look at our, most of our other bylaws, the noise bylaw, it's four sentences, you know, it gives you times and dates and, and things like that. I think that's what people need, need to have and we really ought to look at it. This is a great document, but not as a bylaw. And I think it's a very viable document, but it's not a bylaw. You know, it's, it's longer than most of our, the rest of our bylaws put together.
Those are very good points and we would really appreciate having those thoughts so we can put them out to the public. And before we even do that, perhaps consider at our next meeting that we would want a more general set of rules as the bylaw and this is just another part of, I don't know how much of this is state law, right?
And if it's state law, we don't have to restate it in our town bylaws. You can say, you must obey state laws, then, you know, that leaves it to, you know.
That's where I think the most important part of this is where the, it ups the penalties for removing town trees or, because I can't remember what, it's $50 now or something? It's really a pittance if somebody cuts down one of our trees. And so I think that that is the important stuff.
But Josh, I think we need to differentiate between cutting down a tree, which I think is pretty heinous and we don't want to have done, and somebody saying, this branch is, got hit by a truck, it's bending down, now I got to call five people and wait three months. And I had that situation next door to me. It took four months for somebody to come out from Northern Tree Service to take your, we could have gone over with a, with a tree saw and taken out the branch, but you're not allowed to. And it just, it looked terrible, it was terrible. By the time they got to it, they had to take down the whole tree rather than, than the branch because it had killed the tree. So.
Bylaw does allow though, the ability for the homeowner to prune that branch with the tree warden's permission.
With the tree warden's permission though, that.
That is pretty good, she's pretty quick with that. That's not bad. But I do understand everything else you're saying.
A lot of people are probably not even aware we have a tree warden to be glad.
They may not and I don't know how to get around that one. I mean, for the website.
I mean, Pat, the issue for me is, make it simple, make it easy, make it quick, make it limited, hit the high points and implement a bylaw and that people can, can support. 10 pages is just, people are just, and I think that's what you got, they just said, that's it.
And to Josh's point, I mean, I think that coming back with another article, which is exactly, or bylaw, which is exactly the same as one that was voted down, I think kind of making it more concise, making it one page with all the important bullet points gives you the chance to say, we heard you. We, we heard that this was a little too verbose, we're going to make it more streamlined and this, I mean, I think it's better to say, we heard the town, we made some changes and let's try this again because we don't think we got our message to point across.
The other thing I would suggest is that we incrementalize this. What are the most, five most important things we want to do? Get those into the bylaw. You can add on to them if you need to, but if the five worst situations we have aren't being addressed, let's get those in because at this point, we don't have anything and it's really painful. And we may not get it all, but let's get something at least in there.
Okay, all right.
Good points, very helpful.
I give. So we redraft this and probably have to submit it for the fall, correct? I'm assuming that's where, there's no way.
Well, I mean, there's still time, it just depends on.
Is it April 3rd?
We, we have until, the thing goes to print, until the warrant goes to print. I mean, essentially, we don't want to do that, but we've done it in the past.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, Mike, if you could provide more guidance on the timing.
Yeah, so Leah is obviously at a conference actually this week, so, but the first select board meeting that you will review the warrant is March 24th. Articles are due March 7th, so you do have some time between now and March 7th to draft an article. And then you have some time to kind of structure it and work at your own individual committee meetings between now and then, do public outreach, but as long as realistically it's on the draft warrant by, and that's really the purpose of bringing it forward tonight is to reengage the conversation, to see if there was an appetite for bringing it back. And it seems like if we can work on something, you know, collaboratively to mix up the changes you suggested, we can make that happen. So March 24th realistically is the target date that the select board will review the draft warrant, so.
Okay.
So that's, that's the final date? It's March 24th?
March 7th is the date that we, if, if things change in between, if, if language changes in between March 7th and March 24th, that can be communicated into the warrant, but ideally it would be sooner rather than later.
We basically do a first pass of it on March 7th and then we will vote on it on March 24th, so.
March 24th, you'll review it in April 7th.
Oh, sorry, sorry.
Yeah. March 7th is just the date that we recommend that departments and committees get their articles since we have enough time to prepare the structure of the warrant.
When is your next tree committee meeting?
Can be sooner.
Do you have a quorum now? Third Tuesday of the month, so.
Okay.
We just had one.
Just to, following along the conversation here and obviously having sat through a lot of the tree hearings here with you and working on some of this with Corinne and Leah, I, I completely get that people aren't going to read the, the bulk of this, that's just the nature of how it works. But I'm looking through this very quickly and I'm, it's broken out in areas that I think are really easy to understand, tree removals, tree planting, requests, requests for pruning and I'm kind, I'm, hopefully you won't struggle with this, but I'm sitting here struggling with what are you going to take away that's going to make this still something that people can understand, given that some of the questions that have come before you and some of the questions that have come into the office when people are asking to do something on their property. I get it's long, but I, I think it covers everything that we've all addressed, at least phone calls in my office, conversations with Leah. And so that's why I'm asking when your next meeting is because I don't know if you need more guidance on stuff that you would want, you need more guidance on areas that you think could be streamlined, but I'm looking at this and I'm, I don't know where you're going to go with this.
Well, we don't either, I think that's why we have to get together. This is modeled after North Hampton's, I believe, so.
And several other communities have passed ordinances similar in length and, you know, we didn't just pull this out of the air. So I think Leah and Lynn and crew looked at other ordinances as well, in terms of length and coverage.
Lynn, what, I know we like to reduce things to bylaws and not have them as policies and procedures, but is, is there something that we can do in the interim that gives us critical bylaws and then refers to policies that allows the, the tree warden, the tree committee as an appeal, whatever it is, so we can move forward with something that's understandable? And I, and I'll repeat my comment of, you know, even if we don't get it all now, let's get something and, and work toward what we need. I don't, I don't know that there's issues with every one of these items, so let's get the ones that have the issues and address those and hopefully we can do the rest later. And state law, we don't have to replace, repeat state laws.
I have a set of points here that Leah gave before she left and they're very short, so I'd like to read them to you and you can see what you think about these as a start. The highlights. Cutting and pruning of public shade trees other than by the tree warden was never allowed previously under state law. This bylaw formalizes processes allowing residents to obtain a permit to prune trees under the tree warden's supervision. Two, right now, the only way under state law to move forward with managing unauthorized cuttings is to issue up to $500 fine. The bylaw will allow for additional fines and/or mitigation plantings as a response to removals. And that really pertains more, I think, to a business, cutting down trees on their tree belt or maybe damaged by some type of construction people. But number three, the bylaw will formalize tree protection requirements for when construction work will impact public shade trees such as excavating near roots. And the last one, this bylaw will encourage planting the correct tree in the correct location using proper planting practices. So this was just sort of a general, shorten up the key points, but would this be something that you're thinking of as a start?
I don't know, Kathy, if you're asking me, I, the answer is probably yes. I think one thing that I wrote down, the, you know, bylaws, you know, pruning's not allowed without permission of the tree warden. I think if the bylaw said, which shall be received within, you know, five business days or whatever, you know, that makes people feel, I'm, I'm putting this in and nine months later, I'm still can't do whatever I, I need to, you know, something that lets people know the government's working for, the town's going to work for them and, and, you know, but the answer for your specific question is yes. If it formalizes tree protection requirements that are already covered under state law, just say state law prevails, you know, people, we don't have to restate that. But again, that whole idea of I need to go get the tree warden, I know, Pat, you said, you know, Leah's pretty good and she is pretty good, but you want to know that and I know that, but there's 15,000 people in Long Meadow who may not know that and for them to hear and you will get that back to you within one business week or three business days or something, that, that goes a long way toward people saying, you know, I'm, I'm getting what I want.
But there's 300 people who show up to town meeting if you can educate them.
One other comment, we went through quite a long period where we didn't have a tree warden, job was taken by people in different departments. And I think at that point, there was an awful lot of a time lapse when, when people would put in and say, oh, I want someone to come and look at my tree, but it was someone from the DPW and they were too busy. Now Leah does this full-time and she really does try to get back very quickly and most of her forms that you have to fill out are only a half-page. So someone can do it easily and she can get back quickly. But that, you know, that's something that we should somehow let the town know, we're in a new position, we have a tree warden and like you say, we'll get back to you in, in a week or so.
Anything else? Dan, did you have anything?
Yeah, I can jump in quick. Yeah, I mean, I, well, first I want to thank the, the tree committee. I know out of, out of a lot of the different committees that we all are liaisons to, the tree committee for, at least since my time, they've been very active and I appreciate you taking this back up and, you know, taking some of the advice from the residents and then the board and others. I think some of the flexibility points that you, that Patrick, I think, brought up earlier is certainly a good idea, working with the, the tree warden. To Mark's point, I think, Mark, you might have mentioned something about like a noise violation. I just, in terms of looking at how we have a tree violation, it's just, trees obviously are much more complex, they're above ground, below ground, so I can understand why we have such details in this report or bylaw, but with that being said, if we can minimize it to, you know, a handful of like FAQs or some, some bullet points just to educate the public and, and really certainly at town meeting as well, from like a presentation perspective, getting the word out to folks and just presenting it a bit more clearly, I think it'll, it'll be more favorable. But I do agree, I think Mark was saying, it's, you know, 10 pages is, is a lot, but like I said, trees are certainly a complex issue and I will be very happy once we do have something in place because I think every time we have more and more of these tree hearings, like I said last time, it's a very slippery slope and we don't have anything that we've truly been following and this will really help make our decisions more clear moving forward. So certainly echo a lot of the thoughts that everyone had brought up, but really appreciate the, the tree committee's work on this and, and staying on top of things.
Great, thank you. All right, yeah, thank you all so much for joining us tonight and continuing this conversation. Yeah, thank you all. Next up is our charter review update, so this is a continuation of a conversation that we started at our last meeting. Attached is, you know, a document that kind of goes over this new configuration of the capital planning and will now be called the Capital Planning and Building Committee. So really since the last meeting, nothing very substantive, kind of minor changes here and there, but, you know, wanted to, you know, we're talking about, you know, potentially having this to be voted on for our annual town meeting, so wanted to, you know, open it up for folks after getting a chance to see this document, to provide any feedback or thoughts or anything else they want to discuss on this. And Lynn, was there anything that you wanted to add before we kind of?
Just, I just wanted to point out that it is a different version than what you had the last three versions. And it's different because I took some of the comments that were made at the meeting and some of the comments I received after the meeting and kind of merged them into a new document. I do think that we are a lot closer, there's some other areas that I think we do need to discuss, but I think it's, it's close.
Great. Anything from the board? Well, that's Mark.
I, I had a chance to look at this pretty carefully and I sent some information to Lynn beforehand and afterwards, and I appreciate the, Lynn's inclusion of a lot of this stuff and, but I'd, I'd like to think that there's still some things in here we probably don't need. And I say that in terms of my experience with the building committee and other things. I, you know, for example, under oversight and reporting, it says, it's part C, "Committee shall review maintenance plans to ensure they align with the long-term needs of town buildings." You know, we got a lot of people looking at maintenance and I, you know, I, I think the people are very good on the building committee and capital planning, but frankly, they, you know, we don't need them looking over the shoulder of our DPW and maintenance teams for what they're doing for maintenance because what this devolves into is literally a, going through every maintenance item on the, on the building or the facility and I think that's not what, what we intended to do. If we wanted to look at maintenance, you know, policies or maintenance programs or whatever, that's very different, but reviewing the maintenance plans to me seems excessive for, for having this committee do this. The other thing, and I talked to Lynn about this and I know Lynn didn't really seem to agree with it, but one of the things that I have found in the past to be extraordinarily help, help was the reporting back of the progress on capital planning and on capital spending, on capital projects, because we seem to have no good feedback mechanism to the select board certainly and even to the, that committee of, once the money's expended, you know, we don't know what the, what really happened to it. We used to have a very, very, you know, formal reporting of, of capital projects and capital project status and that's kind of gone by the wayside. And I had thought that the committee should be responsible for overseeing, at least I indicated the transmission between the town, which is the DPW and County Executive, and the select board on progress of expenditure history of prior year capital projects. In other words, the, the town does their thing, but the, the capital planning committee or capital planning, building committee know what it is and they include that in their communication back to the select board. I thought that, that was also an important, an important item. So those, those were the critical things, but I think it's important that we do something about it and that we integrate the building and capital planning committees.
Thanks. Any, any thoughts about Mark's point about the maintenance plans? Obviously I don't know the, you know, I've heard another argument against it, but what Mark is saying seems like it makes sense. And it does kind of seem like overkill and not something that we necessarily need to task the committee with. So that seems like something that maybe we could do away, away with. The reports part, I guess I, I guess I'm wondering, Mark, kind of like exactly, exactly what you mean by that, because I feel like, you know, just from DPW reports, from everything else happening, we kind of have a good sense of what's happening with these capital projects and where they're, where they are, but you're talking about maybe something that's just. maybe something that's just like a separate document that is just on the capital reports?
Yeah, I guess I could share with you the reports that we had gotten, but they basically were, you know, and I'm sure Lynn and Ian have seen them. There's the capital projects approved, here's how much was approved, here's how much was expended, here's how much yet to be expended, you know, here's how much is encumbered or whatever, and here's what we expected to close out at, you know. And one of the biggest problems we have with capital planning, in my opinion, is that we do capital planning, essentially Lynn does it, in October, November for a project that's at least a year away, maybe more than that. And so our costs are best estimates, our best efforts, but they're rarely right on because that's the nature of the beast. That's one of the reasons we've worked into the capital plan of chunk of money so that when we miss by $700, the whole project doesn't have to sit there and just linger. We have money that to make up, make up these differences. But, but following up on, you know, the quantity, quality and extent of, of the cost estimate, I think is important for us and it's important for everybody in the process. So we know how well we're doing. I mean, and so that's really what I intended. Not really a, you know, I don't need a detailed 10-page written report on each project. And I think the DPW report we got from the facilities group and from the project group does a good job of summarizing the project in pros, but not necessarily in finances.
Josh?
Mark, did you mean something beyond what the last bullet point under oversight and reporting? Committee shall receive reports on the status of capital projects and expenditures and provide updates to the select board?
Yeah, I guess that, that to a large extent, that covers much of it, but it, you know, reports on the status of capital projects, I don't know if that's, you know, as detailed as I would have liked to seen it. But yes, you're right.
Okay. Yeah. I, because I see what you mean. That is an important thing to come our way and so cause some surprises.
Yeah. The one other thing that I would have liked to have seen in this that doesn't have in there so much is, you know, I, my history is, I was on the capital planning committee before we had a town manager. And at that point, the process was town departments and school committee all went to the capital planning committee who was the clearinghouse. We now have a town manager who's the clearinghouse. And so the question is, what is the role of the capital planning, the capital planning and building committee? In my mind, and I'd like to think other people would agree, it's the voice of the residents. In other words, Lynn does a great job of prioritizing them based on input from town department heads and her understanding of what's going on. But I think that what I'd like to see in here is the intent of the capital planning doing and building committee doing capital planning is to feed back to the town manager and to the select board saying, we heard Lynn's priorities were one through 10, but we think probably number nine is, should be number six because of such and such, because of the community feeling. That, that didn't come through this. And, and by including that, it better for me defines what the job is of the capital planning committee, which is not to second guess the town manager, not to create the priorities, but rather impose the residents' sense or the feelings or hearings of the residents on that, on that prioritization.
Okay. Anything else? So, you know, it sounds like, well, because no one has spoken up, at least the, the maintenance part is something that we could maybe strike.
Yeah. Yeah. Do you want, I'm happy to give some comment. Yeah, I'm, I'm in agreement with that maintenance part coming out. I think that makes sense. That's fine. A lot of this was a consolidation of the permanent building committee mission and the capital planning mission. Capital planning is already required to provide those status reports. That, that's something they're just not doing. Internally, we do that. There's a quarterly, is it quarterly?
Monthly.
Capital expenditure report accounting does. It's exactly what Mark was just explaining that the previous capital committee used to do. That's still being done, but it's being done in-house. So I would be open to maybe accounting or finance including that in their monthly report. But my hesitation, and this was the area that Mark and I had some disagreement on, my hesitation was adding another administrative level that just made more work for departments when it's something we're already doing, it's working well. Capital planning in the existing form is, was supposed to be doing something, but just hasn't been. And we've been able to, we're still making it work. If there's more information that you want, I think the information's already there. I just would love to see a streamlined way to provide it to you. So I'm not, I'm not opposed to you getting those progress.
Venee, can I just, I think it's, I have no problem with that report being included in somebody's monthly report. My only request would be that you also send it to capital planning committee so they understand that's one of their responsibilities to look at it and oversee it. But they don't need to do anything else with it other than to have it, but they ought to have it. And if it's included in a report, I'm great.
Yeah. I think one of the things that is going to be critically important is that if this happens, if we rework this, it passes, that there is a, I guess for lack of better words, onboarding with this new committee to really go over how important they are, what they're required to do, and what the expectations are. Because the way it's, it's working now is not working. And we have an opportunity to fix it and make it something that we all can benefit from. And to Mark's point, sharing it with them from the get-go to say, this is what's expected of you and, and this is why it's important of us. I think we, we need to commit to doing that if this passes.
Yeah, absolutely. And so, okay. So looking at section six, it looks like we can get rid of C and then D, maybe reword that, the beginning of it sounds right where it says, "The committee shall receive reports on the status of capital projects and expenditures." Obviously, they don't need to provide updates to us. We'll be getting it directly from the department. But maybe just some language in there about how they need to be reviewing it regularly or monthly would be helpful, I think, rewording it that way. Anything else? Mark?
I think it's a great revision with a couple of those changes we made. My only question now is that this addresses the status of the capital planning committee and building committees. What can we do about the flow of information, materials? You know, the way that, the charter, I think, is very specific that says, "The town manager shall do this and it shall go here in so many days and then go there and go." And, and that is still fairly convoluted, for lack of a better phrase. And I, I'd like to ask that as your next effort, you take that on and see if we can't streamline that as well. There's just too many people review, you know, it's, there's, the finance committee is involved and the capital planning committee. If we can take a look in, you know, and streamline that flow, we can make this stuff happen a lot faster.
One of the other conversations we've had about that is what you were talking about earlier, is that we get quotes. So departments start getting quotes in October. And then it's going through the vetting process right now. The money's not available to them till July. We have one procurement manager, by the time it goes out to bid, it's a year old now. And so one thought we had was flipping this whole thing. And this has not been sussed out. So I'm open to continuing to discuss this, but that in the FY, future fiscal year budget, we have the line item for, say it's $2 million, capital planning. There is no projects associated with it. And that the capital planning process would start right after the money became available July 1st for approval at the special fall town meeting. So money's available July 1st, departments start getting their quotes then. It's a very compact timeline. And then September, projects are done, or projects, applications are done, vetted out, and it goes to the fall town meeting, and then the money's available the next day. So we have a four-month capital plan instead of a 12-month capital plan. That was one idea. That would shorten that up. And I, I think we should continue to talk about it. I don't think it's something we need to decide right now. We could amend it later, but.
I think it's a great idea. I think the, the weak link in there is it commits the town to capital funding.
Yeah.
Without knowing what the money's going to be used for. So, you know, that means we go into town meeting and say, we need $2 million for capital funds. Trust us, we're going to spend it wisely.
Well, it comes back to town meeting in the fall to allocate for the specific projects. So all they're doing is approving the bucket of money for capital. And then fall town meeting is where it would all get plugged into the projects. It all, it all needs to be worked out.
But that's, stuff like that starts to make a lot of sense.
Dan, that's, oh yeah, go ahead, Dan.
Oh, I was just going to say regarding the reports. So do we, do we have like sample reports that have, that we, that the committee has used in the past that might be helpful when we, when we're, or I guess maybe Lynn, when you're talking to them about, you know, what does good look like? Are there examples of, of what those reports are to Mark's point? I know Mark wants to see certain things in the report, but maybe we already have that? I, I just don't know.
In terms of the capital planning reports to like select board, no, I'm not aware of those. But we do have a, an Excel report showing the capital budget, where the projects, what projects that were funded, and then the status of those. That exists already. That's kept in-house by accounting.
Lynn, do you want me to share that with Mike so we can view it? Would that be helpful?
Maybe if you want to get into that level of detail right now.
Sure. I just. No, thank you. But I'm, I'm not sure if we can get to that level right now. But, but I also want to say that some of the stuff that, you know, Mark and Lynn and Joel were just talking about and consolidating timelines, we're working on timelines, they were, we looked into that as part of the capital planning program working group that I was on during my first year. And we actually produced a memo that kind of talked about some of this. So I don't know if that'd be useful to, to either, you know, send that memo around again to the select board or to maybe like attach it to our next agenda. It's just like correspondence or something just for folks to, to take a look at some of what that working group came up with.
Yeah. And also if the board decides that they want to bring this, you know, to annual town meeting and this is on the first draft warrant, we can definitely attach that memo from the, you're talking about the capital resilient group. Yeah, we could attach that memo to that discussion too, just so that it's a refresher.
Yep. Yep. Sounds great. Okay. Anything else on this one? Okay. So I think with those revisions, then really it's just about putting this on the warrant, right?
Yeah. Yeah. If we're heading in the right direction, we'll start drafting the warrant articles that are associated with this and bring it back to you.
Great. That sounds great. All right. Thank you, everyone. Next, we will talk about another continuation, old business from my conversation last meeting, the remote meeting participation policy. There was some question about whether a policy had been adopted previously. We looked into it. We looked at the record. There had not been. And so we do need to adopt a policy. Of course, you know, on the state side, they are likely to extend their remote, remote laws, remote meeting laws. But in the event they don't, we do need to have something in place. And also, right now, committees are looking to us for guidance, calling the town manager's office. And so you will see attached the policy. I think it's the second document. And back from when we talked about this the first time, I, there were a couple of things that we had mentioned about requiring folks coming to meetings to be in person in certain instances, such as when someone was seeking a new liquor license. And so I think that that was from when we had this conversation last time, some of the things that we were like most focused on trying to iron out. The rest of it is, I think, also, you know, a lot of the language is, is coming from town council and has been vetted by them. But I know, Mike, you also wrote a memo. I don't know if there's anything else you want to add to this?
Yeah, no, that summarizes it. I believe that actually, absent of you guys just wanting to provide additional details and guidance for people attending, most of that language is already in the provisions that I outlined in state law. But if you adopt the provision set forth in chapter 30A, section 20D, that authorizes remote participation by members of a public body not present at the meeting, providing that the absent members and all persons present at the meeting location are clearly audible and provided further that a quorum of the body and the chair is in person. So that, that's really the only language that you need to adopt to enact that change going forward. But the, the original intent of the policy, I think we brought it back last year, was to provide those extra local guidelines for if you do want somebody to come in person for a liquor license hearing or for a pull petition or something of that nature. And that's totally up to you guys to decide on whether or not you want to have that layer of, you know, structure.
Yep. Yep. Thank you. Mark?
So, Venee, I, Mike, wherever wrote this did a great job. The, the one thing that concerns me about this policy is the last sentence says, "Each such board and committees may adopt more restrictive requirements for public attendance where required by the nature of the business." And it essentially says, "The allowance of, and restrictions of this remote participation shall apply to other boards and committees," replacing the words "select board" with the name of the board. We have a pretty extensive section seven that says people need to be here for liquor license and stuff like that. I think we ought to require the other boards who adopt this to have their own section seven. In other words, what does the zoning board of appeals want people present for? What is the, you know, the tree committee want, you know, anybody who's adopting this ought to tell us, you know, in writing what they want people present for. And I think that that's the one gap I see here is, because it allows other, other committees to adopt this just by saying, we adopt it and we're changing the word "select board" to, you know, cultural committee. Well, but the cultural committee must have something that they, maybe they don't, but if they don't, they should say it, that they want people present for.
Yep.
So all I'm saying is, it says, it says here that these boards and committees, the term "select board," whatever, that, you know, it says that they should communicate in writing to the town clerk in the office of the select board if they've adopted it. I would like to add, and include their own section seven or something like that. Their own requirements for in-person attendance.
Yeah. I know what you're saying because it, it may be different for, for other boards and committees who they may, or they may say it's okay for them to, to join.
They have no restrictions. I don't know.
Ultimately, committees can decide to follow this same practice, but the, the main purpose of adopting those provisions in the master of law is what is going to allow these committees to meet in a hybrid format moving forward if the temporary provisions lapse. So you have time to review and come back and talk about the policy further if you need, if you want to make amendments to it. But ultimately, if you do adopt the provisions of master law going forward, that's the first step really. So.
Yeah, I, I understand what you're saying, Mark. But I think, so, so as it's written right now, right, it's, for any other border committee, the instances where the select board would want folks to come in person also applies to them, right? And then it's allowing them also other space to make further restrictions. Just basically say, you know, whatever, whatever they want people coming before them to be in person. And, but these other boards, committees are not going to have utility companies or they're not going to have liquor license applications. So it's.
But they might have a zoning appeals petitioner that they want. I, all I'm saying is that it says they may adopt more restrictive requirements. All I'm saying is write those down and submit those when you send it to the, the town clerk. I'm not, I don't care what they write down. They say, they say, we have no restrictions. Nobody ever needs to appear before us in public. But if they do, they need to write it down so that everybody understands it in advance.
Doesn't it already say that?
No, it doesn't say that they have to.
Because such more restrictive requirements must be approved by a majority of that border committee, be documented in the minutes of that border committee, and be communicated in writing to the town clerk and the office of the select board.
So does that say that, that their restrictions must be?
Yeah. So they must be in the minutes and then they must send that to the town clerk and the select board's office.
All right.
All right. Anything else?
Just a point of clarification. So on, in regards to liquor licenses, for example, so, Mark, correct me if I'm wrong, but am I understanding that every time the senior center wants to have a one-day liquor license, that we're demanding that from the select board in person?
No. It says, a new liquor license. It actually says, here, liquor license violation, annual regulation hearing, zoning. It actually says here, liquor license violation, annual regulation hearing, zoning change referral request.
I think it might be referring to a, a hearing. So, if there was a new liquor license hearing, so we could clarify that in the, in the policy if necessary.
Yeah, let's, I think we should clarify that.
Yeah.
And if they're coming up for renewal and they have no violations against them, I mean, I think we need to.
It's not a hearing.
Work with the, work with them.
Yeah, no, I agree with you, Dan, I think we should change the wording on that. I think that's what we probably meant to say, but it's just not written as clearly.
You can, I think if you're just insert seeking new annual liquor license or annual or seasonal.
Yeah.
Leave it to the lawyers.
If it requires a hearing.
Well, any annual or new, that would require a hearing.
Yep.
It says hearing. We don't require hearings for renewals. No, I.
Yeah.
Separate, yeah.
Okay, and then, and then, you know, I think it's seven B to some other examples. It says individuals attending a hearing before the select board at which they, their property or their businesses are subjects of the hearing. So, liquor license violation, annual regulation hearing, zone change, referral requests. And so, you know, it's, it's kind of written in a way that like gives us more latitude, right, purposely?
Yep.
Great, okay, great, okay.
Can I just ask, if the state renews their remote license, remote meeting requirement, none of this applies, correct?
Well, you can still have local policy, you can still have a local policy in place to make specific requirements as you see fit, so.
I think we should do this regardless because of what we're talking about.
Right now, I mean, if somebody wanted to come via Zoom that you would prefer to be in person, you don't have anything in writing that really backs that. You could request kindly that they're attend in person, but this gives you a little bit more backing.
Yep, yep. Okay, so if there aren't any alterations to make to this, we can vote on this.
Yep.
Tonight, right, to adopt it.
You just want to change that, you know, petitioner seeking a new annual or seasonal liquor license, I'll make that change.
Yep, perfect. All right, I will entertain motions.
I'll move that we approve the law on the select board remote meeting participation policy.
Second.
As amended, I should say.
Any further discussion? Ian, did you have something you wanted to add? Oh, no, okay. Any further discussion on this? Mike?
Mr. Amavati?
Yes.
Dr. Lamb?
Yes.
Mr. Gold?
Yes.
Mr. Levine?
Yes.
Mr. Zwirko?
Yes.
Okay, great, thank you. Now, we will move into new business and we have the quarterly investment report. Is Erica with us?
Yes.
Perfect. Hi, Erica.
Good evening, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. Thank you for joining us and we are ready for you to talk us through the quarterly investment report.
Perfect, thank you. So, tonight I'm submitting my quarterly report on the status of the town's cash and investments for the period ending December 31st, 2024. As per the investment policy, the town held no long-term investments that exceeded the five-year limit. The individual bank balances were under the $20 million bank provision. All banks received the highest safety rating of green from Bear Bank except for Newburyport and Eastern Bank, where both institutions received a yellow rating. All accounts are fully insured or secured. The second quarter of the fiscal year 2025 has continued to produce interest rate decreases due to the Fed dropping rates. The most noteworthy decreases were from People's Bank and Newburyport Bank, where our rates dropped from 4.51% to 3.94%, and that, excuse me, 4.95% to 4.55% respectively. The treasurer and assistant treasurer closely monitoring interest rates and moving funds to their appropriate accounts that will optimize investments with the best return. As mentioned, Newburyport Bank and Eastern Bank both experienced a change in Bear Bank ratings from green to yellow during this quarter. I reached out to representative from both institutions for comments on those changes and provided the explanations as attached to this memo. I will continue to monitor the ratings for both of these institutions in the future. The OPEC pension reserve investment fund experienced a loss in quarterly interest. The quarter ended with a net decrease of approximately $50,000. The December 31st balance in the fund is approximately $8.3 million. Also noteworthy, during the second quarter, the town earned a total of approximately $467,000 in interest. The treasurer's office will continue to seek the best possible interest rates and diversify funds according to max, appropriately to maximize investment potential, while being in compliance with Massachusetts state laws and regulations. We will also continue to monitor all accounts and ensure safety and security of all of our investments.
Great, thank you so much, Erica. Any questions, comments from the board, Mark?
Yeah, Erica, the, the Newburyport Bank, Bear Bank, yellow rating, I thought it said it was for the quarter ending September 30th. Was, was there a rating for the quarter ending December 31st?
So, our ratings are quarterly that we receive from Bear Bank, so they're a little bit behind. So, the most recent one was for September, as you'll see in the email that I have with Newburyport. The more recent one since that quarterly rating has not been published yet.
Okay, so, and, and can you just remind me of what our policy is if a bank has two consecutive quarters of yellow rating?
I don't have it with me, but I think it's two or three quarters and then we start monitoring and slowly moving out funds. It's when it becomes red that we have to get all the funds out.
Right, so, so we're, I assume, on the lookout for Newburyport's December, Bear Bank, you know, rate.
Yeah.
And they, and they understand our, our internal policy about that, I assume.
Yes.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. Anything else? All right, I don't know if Dan has anything, but.
No, I'm good, thank you.
Okay, great, thanks. All right, I think that's all we've got for you, Erica.
Thank you so much, have a great night, everyone.
Yeah, thank you, you too. All right, next up, we have a discussion about general reserve stabilization fund. I think the chair of the finance committee, Erica Weida, is joining us by Zoom. Okay, great. And so, kind of to set the table on this a little bit, I think the finance committee did a, an in-house workshop thinking about new ways that, you know, they can kind of go about assessing some things and, and thinking about the way that the finance committee can go about being, you know, adding value to the town. And I also had a meeting with the chair of the finance committee, another member of the finance committee too, about some of these ideas. And I think, you know, a result of this has been a policy proposal that the finance committee has brought forth to the select board. This was sent around to the select board this afternoon and I know that the finance director, Ian, and Lynn also prepared a PowerPoint on this. So, this is not something, I think, as was stated in the email to the select board, not something that needs to be voted on tonight, but something that, you know, we'd like to present and talk to the select board about tonight and then continue this conversation on into our next meeting. So, Ian, Lynn, I'll turn over to you for the PowerPoint.
Sure, well, I'll just defer right to Ian, who.
Sure.
We worked on a PowerPoint today that lays this whole thing out, so go through it.
Do you?
Do you need me to send it to you?
Yes, please, thank you.
Sure. So, while I send it to Mike, I'll kind of queue up the discussion. So, good evening, everyone. The point of our discussion today is part of a longer discussion where the select board, as part of their goals, made a discussion in June of last year where they wanted to look at the specific financial policies of the select board. Erica Weida, the finance chair, has been working with the other members specifically on the reserves and the stabilization fund. Today, I will be going over a specific policy change that will discuss changes to the operation stabilization fund and queue up separate discussions where I want to go over our general reserves and future policies.
It's going to be worth the wait.
Yeah, I'm just waiting for it to come through. You would think right across the room it would come pretty soon.
Erica, just share a little bit of like control.
Well, I can, I can kind of comment on what the finance committee's involvement with this is. There's been a lot of discussion with the finance committee, which actually, Dr. Lamb was, brought you into this, where they've wanted to take a more advisory role within their, within their committee and kind of look at, the town of law, I mean, I was a whole picture and figure out where they can best be used in terms of providing a supporting service for me as the finance director, but also to work with the town manager to either do research outside of my role or to help distinguish things that are important to town residents. In the discussions that we've been having recently, there's been a lot of discussion about the stabilization fund and how well-funded it is. And if the question came up is, is there a better use of the funds? So, today I want to go over what I think would be a potential strategy that the town could use going forward. I'm ready with you, am I?
Yep.
So, if you want to go to the first slide, so, the goal of our discussion today is to discuss amending the operating stabilization fund policy to allow the use of interest revenue when the fund exceeds the seven and a half percent target. Additionally, interest funds would be used to supplement next fiscal year's capital or municipal budget. So, the operating stabilization fund was established by vote of town meeting on November 18th, 2003 pursuant to Mass General Law, chapter 40, section 5B. The original goal was to reach 4% of the town's operating budget. The current policy, which was amended in June of 2018, has a target balance of seven and a half percent of the general funds operating revenues. In the last four years, the stabilization fund has been over the target balance of seven and a half percent. If you want to go to the next slide, Mike, this, this slide shows the history of the general reserves from 2012 to 2025. Now, what are the general reserves? The general reserves make up the free cash and operating stabilization fund. Free cash is measured as of July 1st of the fiscal year, and this is the date that free cash is certified. Since 2012, the general reserve and operation stabilization fund have had the following performance. In 14 years, the operating stabilization fund has been over the minimum goal of 4% for 12 of those years. In the last four years, the operation stabilization fund has been over the target balance of seven and a half percent and has exceeded the maximum balance of 10% of general fund operating revenues in the last two years. I highlight these things because this is the result of prior year transfers from free cash and healthy interest rates, which has created such a large balance in the fund. Moving to the next slide.
Sorry, when you're sharing on Zoom, it's a little bit different.
No, it's okay.
Presenting mode.
No, no worries. The next slide talks about the interest rates that have been received on the operation stabilization fund in the last three years. I discussed this with Erica Brunel, our treasurer, who provided me with the following details. In January 2023 to November, we received 3.92% interest rate. From November 23 to 24, we see 5.52. And currently, as of November 24, we're receiving about 4.72% on the stabilization fund. Now, before January of '23, the stabilization fund was kept in money market accounts as rates were not previously as strong. The next slide shows the history of the interest revenue that's been earned since 2012. I'd like to highlight that in the last three years, we have had the most significant growth in our interest earned. And as a note, the ending balance of the stabilization fund is not only impacted by interest. So, in the year-to-year change, if you might notice, it's not going to line up exactly. Why is this all important? This is important because if you saw in the slide that showed the stabilization fund target balances, we are currently over our maximum policy. I bring to you today a current proposal that amends the stabilization fund policy to allow the use of interest revenue when the fund exceeds that target. The use of interest revenue requires a two-thirds majority vote to transfer from the stabilization fund, as is required by Mass General Law. The goal is ultimately not to touch the principal balance of the fund. As we know, emergencies can happen and the markets, as well as the economies, can be impacted by changes in administration, changes in global marketplace. And what we don't want to do is throw off the stabilization fund by spending unnecessarily. I hope that these, this discussion today will be fruitful in the sense that the goal is to provide another lever for the town manager and I to use within both our capital planning and our budget planning. This is something that has come up in past years where, as budgets continue to become tighter, we have to look at additional ways for us to address those needs. As we've seen in the past few years, costs continue to rise. Critically needed infrastructure projects, roadwork have deferred maintenance for years and need for it to be done. The trade-off between going our reserves well over policy targets, I feel, is not worth the risk of continuing to defer critical needs in our capital. This is why I am recommending to the select board to adopt this policy change in the operation stabilization fund, to better take advantage of the strong position we put ourselves in and continue to chip away at well-needed capital requests. Lynn has also attached to the select board the specific language that would be changed within the policy, and I'm happy to speak to that as well.
We're going to put it up on the screen so you can see it.
So, the text that's highlighted is the specific change that will, that we are proposing to the operation stabilization fund policy. The specific language reads, upon reaching the target balance of seven and a half percent of the general funds operating revenues, based on the completed audited prior fiscal year, the interest calculated is an available revenue source for the next fiscal year's capital and/or operating budget, up to 100% of interest earned. And this requires a two-thirds majority vote. I'd like to highlight a specific point of language that we use within this request, completed audited prior fiscal year. Why would I use this? The reason for this is we don't want to have the risk of using next year or estimates that could fall outside of what the available revenue is. By using an audited number, that number is completed and closed and we would know, for example, what that number would be. This provides us with the assurance that we know what our available funds are to use if we so choose.
Great, thank you so much. And Erica, thank you for joining us. I want to give you the chance to add anything if you'd like.
Um, I would, yeah, so you have the finance board recommendation because that was sent around. We would not want to include operating budget as a reason for using of this interest. We specifically were trying to find additional funds to address what we think is a very extensive need for capital and maintenance improvements in the town's infrastructure. So, we were hoping to find ways to add to the $2 million in a real way to start making some gains on that. I would say that. I would say that as the finance committee, we would not be in favor of putting it toward general operating budget expenditures, but think it should be spent for this very specific reason.
Great, thank you. Okay, Josh.
Yeah, I think this is a really interesting idea. And I think I just, in terms of where the money would be used, I think, as we were reading this, I, I think I agree with Erica because I've kind of seen a doom loop where you, our operating budget goes up every year, including the use of these funds while the principal is not growing. Or I guess there's a scenario I'm seeing where our principal's not growing because we're using the interest and we don't have free cash. And then our budget, then we're falling towards the seven and a half percent, even below the seven and a half percent. And I just don't want us to use it as a crutch for the operating budget. I just, and when interest rates are good, it's easy to, to think about this and say, yeah, this is great. But if you look back, I think we had half a percent on a couple of years there. And when we get down to that, one, that's not really any money at all, even on eight million bucks. But it can get us into, into some trouble. I'm not saying I'm not in favor of this. I'm just, I do want us to think about it and be, be careful on it. Because using it for a specific purpose of capital improvement is an interesting corollary to this, I guess. But in, in theory, and looking at it right now, it, it sounds, it makes a lot of sense to me because we, it is a lot of money and we have some leeway.
Great, thank you. Andrew?
I do think it's also an interesting idea. I had several thoughts from just hearing about this. I think that the, my interpretation of Erica's suggestion to basically use it for capital is to help us collectively avoid the temptation to use it for something else in the sense that like capital planning is always going to be necessary. We're so far behind. And the fact is, and I don't know if this was part of thinking, one of the main considerations I have when I think about this is the fact that this is not something we're always going to be able to count on. And as Josh alluded to, like, can it really be considered like a recurring fund when like the interest rates could be very low in the future, essentially? So I think that, you know, it's, I have no objection to using the interest for something useful in our town, especially if we've already met the select board policy from the past. But I don't think we should like use it, it's not something we can always count on, essentially. I do think it gives some flexibility. For example, Lynn could know that, hey, interest rates are this much. I'm probably going to have, you know, conservatively can budget this much more. And it doesn't, you know, it's a little less restrictive than the policy of just using operational stabilization funds for unexpected things. So there's some benefit to that. But there's also, you know, the seven and a half percent, I believe, you chose just because it's between five and 10%. It might be a little more fiscally conservative to say, you know, it has to be, once it's 10%, then we do this, essentially. Just kind of make sure we're always at the top level of the select board policy before we, you know, use the interest to do something else with it. But I'm not, I'm just, these are just thoughts I had just from hearing this policy for the first time. My last point and question is, if we do this, it still would require a two-thirds vote at every town meeting that we want to use the interest out of the, yeah, so that's, we're not avoiding that, essentially.
Mark?
Yeah, when I first heard this, I said, what a great idea. And then as I thought more about it, I'm saying, wait a second. And, 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 you know, I guess I'll comment, Erica, you probably know, as well somewhere Peter Landon is rolling over in his grave. Peter Landon was the don't ever use one-time money for recurring expenses guy, and he was right. And, you know, to the extent that this would allow, the proposed policy would allow us to use it for the operating budget is just a recipe for disaster. It means you're living beyond your means, and, and I can't imagine doing that. But on the other hand, using it for capital, especially when we looked at the needs we have for roads and water and things like that, seems to make some sense. And, and I took it a little bit further and said, you know, if we thought about this six months ago, we might have said, instead of borrowing money to do our, do our roads, to add to our roads, because borrowing adds to our operating costs. We could have used this money to add to our roads, which would not have caused us to add to our, our, our operating costs. And I really see funds out of the reserve funds or interest out of the reserve funds as a way to replace bonds potentially, bonds that we thought about using, because that way, it's available when it's available. And if Josh pointed out, the interest rates are half a percent or less, and it's not available, that's fine. But, but we really save a lot of money in interest if we don't have, you know, interest in principle, if we don't have to bond something and we can use this as a, as a, as a source of revenue. And so I, you know, I think we ought to look at this as capital. I particularly saw the note from the finance committee that said, "The investment income dollars are in addition to, rather than a lieu of, capital spending that's currently in the select board's policies." The operating budget, I, you know, I also have a concern about a little bit this system that in the past few years, we have deferred capital till the fall. We said we'll spend, you know, we'll, we'll use free cash for capital. I think that's been great. But as I said in my comments earlier, this year we have to watch out because we're going to have one heck of a snow removal budget. We may not have all that free cash available to, to supplement the capital budget come the fall. And so I think this is an, is an opportunity for capital. I'd support it for capital, but I'd stop there. And like I said, I'd even more support it for replacing bonding.
Dan, anything from you?
Uh, well, first, I mean, I just want to thank Erica and, and the finance committee. I think this is, in a town like Long Meadow, we need to get creative. And I think the finance committee, you know, I, I thank you, and I don't want to speak for the whole board, but we need to get creative in these situations. I think this is a great idea. The only thing I'm, I'm maybe trying to understand is, you know, to Mark's point and then others, like we, we, we need the money towards our roads and, and infrastructure and other things. But if we have more flexibility, which I think maybe Lynn, you had mentioned with this policy as well as Ian, can you kind of explain what that flexibility would, would allow us to do outside of just going this route for capital improvements? Just so I have a better understanding?
Um, in terms of our, our language in there regarding operating budget, yeah. I mean, I've, I've been, it's been no secret that the FY '26 budget is, is one of the most challenging ones I've had yet here. And knowing that that's likely not going to alleviate anytime soon, I didn't want, as Ian and I were talking about this and preparing a, a policy amendment, I didn't want to narrow, put something forward that's so narrow that it restricts us later on, knowing that we could have a discussion about it here. Also, you know, fully respecting the finance committee and then their opinion on how the funding should be used. For example, though, if, if we had this language last year, we could have used it to fund the literacy program, the literacy curriculum, which was not a capital item, but we could have used it for the purchase of that, that, which came out of the operating budget. So things like that, I mean, there's a lot of unforeseen things that come up. And I think what's the other thing that's really important is that I don't view this as using one-time money annually because we don't know, we will, we'll have a good idea, but we won't know as we're really looking ahead in, in future budget preparations what that interest calculation is really going to be. We'll have a rough guess estimate, but the numbers that we've seen the last two years are really helpful. But the numbers we saw 10 years ago really aren't going to do anything to help close a budget gap. So that's why I left it in there, just to provide more flexibility. So much of what we do is not flexible, and I like to take the opportunity for flexibility when we can, but completely understand if you want to do something different.
Andrew?
Thank you.
Speak further. Oh, no, go ahead.
Well, I, I, as I'm hearing this, I'm thinking about it. I kind of, I understand the value of flexibility, but I also feel like I'm kind of a little more sympathetic to the finance committee's original perspective. And the reason is, you know, we, again, we all kind of recognize we don't want this to be used like for operating expenses because it may not be there all the time, right? So if we have a policy where we know at the same time, capital, capital planning money is always going to be needed, and it's almost infinite. So, and as long as we have this policy where it's only used for that supplemental, not to kind of replace funds that they're going to get anyway, it's probably the best way of, you know, thinking of it as like a bonus, essentially. It's not something we're going to put into the budget somewhere and then be upset about it because we don't have the money for it the next year if, if interest rates go down. It's just something where, hey, it's great, the interest rates were great. We got a big windfall this year. We can use it for capital planning and put it somewhere where we know we're going to need it. And they're not getting anything out of their budget, taken out of the budget that they wouldn't always have already have gotten. It's kind of the, a good way of making sure it's used in a way that is always going to be necessary, but doesn't put us into a situation in a following year where we're like, where did this money go? You know?
Josh?
Yeah, I'm glad we're going to have more time to think about this. But Lynn, I thought that the point you brought up about the literacy, literacy program was an interesting one. I mean, I wonder if this could, if we could word it to say a one-time purchase and under the operating budget, or I, which is less flexible, but would give us some opportunity to fund something like that that does come up and doesn't fit under capital. Not, not saying we'd have to, but I, that's something to think about.
Follow-up, if you don't mind. Could, so we could always just vote money out of the operational stabilization fund with a two-thirds vote, could we not? I mean, if it's like a unexpected, you know, would that have qualified for the literacy program? Could we have done that with the, with money from this fund, from this account?
It was.
That it's not expected?
There was discussion about whether or not it met the criteria that the select board policy lays out regarding use of the operating stabilization fund. The allowable uses of the fund is right on the screen, one and two. There was discussion about whether the literacy curriculum met either of those. And ultimately, the board decided it did not.
So Andrew, the, the select board's policy on use is different from the state's policy on use. The state says, you get a two-thirds vote, you can use it to send everybody on a trip somewhere.
More restrictive.
Right, we made it more restrictive.
Yeah, I, I'm, oh, go ahead.
If our goal is to have this between five and 10%, and we're over the 10%, it doesn't seem to me that, like, we're like, you know, hundreds of thousands over the target. To me, we should be able to use that overage in any way we want. If it's a two-thirds vote, it's going to take it out anyway, you know what I'm saying? So, you know, I don't know, I forgot the number. But basically, if we're at like eight million now, and that's 14%, so maybe half a million of that is over the target. To me...
Go ahead.
I haven't necessarily thought of everything yet. This is literally, I'm thinking as I'm talking here.
The issue is, this talks about the operating stabilization, right? But the operating stabilization consists of two components. As Ian showed us, it's free cash plus the reserve account.
No, Mark, it's the other way around. General reserves is, is the operating stabilization, free cash.
General reserve, okay. And this talks about using money from general reserves?
No, this talks about using the stabilization.
Okay, so I guess the point, Andrew, for you, to respond to you is, we don't need to put additional money into the general reserve fund, you know, into the operating stabilization fund. We don't need to continue to put money, we can leave money in free cash, which we have done because our, our stabilization fund is already at that appropriate level. And so, now I got there because of the magic of compound interest. I tell you, it went out pretty quickly when we had a massive storm in town.
Right. So what I'm observing is, we have a policy, that's not the state's policy, it's our town's policy, to be more restrictive in how we use the operational stabilization funds, which I understand. But if we're over the target of the planned 10%, it seems to me that we might be able to be a little less restrictive in that overage. And the town could say, let's use this for a literacy program, you know, as long as we don't go below the 10%, which is already the top of the line. And it still requires a two-thirds town vote, which is pretty difficult. So anyway, this might be a longer discussion for the future, but these are just some.
Yeah, you're talking about two things here. One is your current policy and eligible uses.
Right.
We're talking about interest on the fund balances, which is what we're, our proposal is to be more lenient. But we're not proposing to be more lenient in the stable, operating stabilization.
And to keep us all track, the maximum balance is 10%. We're above 10%, what happens now? And let's say.
So that was, that was kind of where I wanted this discussion to go is, importantly, we have no parameters on once we reach the maximum balance.
Yeah, so if like, if we're 10.2%, and interest rates are at 4%, that's $400,000. We're going abo- above 10%. So what do we do with that? And let's say we put this in, but we didn't, it didn't vote, at a town meeting, it didn't pass.
Was there ever contemplated, and did it, do you think that when they made this policy, that they contemplated it would ever go to over 10% and then we would return it to free cash, so it would be more easily spent? We've just never been lucky enough to be in the situation where the interest has, had us go over the limit, over the theoretical.
I was going to say, Mark was there, but. I was there, and the reason, the reason it's done that is because the interest is at a higher percentage than our town budget is going up every year. So the interest rate's going up at, you know, it was 5%, 4%, whatever, and the town budget was only going up at two and a half percent, 3%, 2.8%, something like that. And so as a percentage of the town operating budget, this was going up. But that will turn around very quickly if interest rates go down below 2% and the town budget continues to increase at 2.8% or 2.7% or whatever it is. And so, you know, over the long haul, it's going to work out that we will be at about that 10% cent level.
Yeah, and then.
How 10% came about was, you know, was a discussion that the finance committee had with our rating agencies at the time.
And when the interest rates go down, are we going to be kicking ourselves that we spend our interest on other projects? I don't think so, and especially because we will know, we should be able to predict to some extent when interest rates are going down because we're looking back at the past year. But, oh, Erica's raising her hand.
Hey, go ahead, Erica.
The old-fashioned one.
I want to talk about the real value of money. And remember, as restoring this money, the price of everything on earth is going up as well. So stuff that we defer is costing more in the future. So if we don't have a good reason to hold on to this money, which as far as the finance committee could tell we don't, to spend it on stuff now that we know is going to have to be done and will be more expensive in three years from now, is always going to be a better idea. So I just, as you look at that, sitting on cash or sitting on money and not doing things that need to be done has a cost that isn't as easy to understand, but it's real. And I think the other, the other piece of the finance committee letter was to say we definitely shouldn't be putting any more money into the stabilization fund at this point. And taking it out of free cash or the operating budget.
Thank you, Erica. I think that's a great point. I mean, I think we've, this has been something we've been talking about, about, when we're talking about our water mains or road paving of, if we had addressed this 20 years ago, 15 years ago, 10 years ago, right, the cost would have been, you know, much lower. And now, you know, we're in a difficult position because those investments hadn't been made previously. You know, I think with this proposal, the, the finance committee was getting at a, a big problem that we have is that the capital, you know, funding is stagnant, and it is nowhere close to meeting the needs of our community. And the finance committee came up with this interesting, creative idea to grow that pot, and, and that's really important. But I also, you know, hearing what Lynn had to say about the flexibility that's needed. Now, a community like us, in, that we have, our budget is difficult. We don't have a lot of flexibility in a lot of places. And so when we do get something like a literacy program, you know, that's unexpected, or a budget like this year's that's, you know, really difficult, I also do, I think, sympathize with needing to have some flexibility to meet those types of situations. with needing to have some flexibility to meet those types of situations. But, you know, I, I don't know if this is like a policy that can be crafted in a certain way or anything, but what I would like to see is that, you know, typically the interest is devoted to capital, deferred maintenance specifically. But then when we do have, you know, these kind of unexpected circumstances, that we do have the flexibility to use it towards those unexpected circumstances. And, you know, of course, the unexpected circumstances are always going to seem like they are the most important thing to address or to do. And I think that that is where we would have to be very sober in our assessment and really having to determine when we would push those funds away from capital over to, you know, whatever the other need is. So, yeah, I mean, I, I appreciate everyone's thoughts. I mean, I, I sat here and listened for a while and, you know, I'm still kind of, you know, unsure, but though, that's kind of where I'm, I'm at right now.
But it sounds like there's consensus that it's not a bad idea and that we appreciate the, definitely the contribution from the finance committee. I mean, the question is really, how, how do we do it? I, I definitely think we should table this idea of like, what do we do with the overage over 10%? Let's just drop that. I mean, this is, what we, with the interest is the matter at hand and, and we're thinking about between now and the next meeting.
Yeah, absolutely.
This is very helpful. I think it's a great idea.
And to Josh's question earlier about making sure that we don't take the interest and have a, essentially a, a no-interest year, we have the specific language where it says up to 100% of interest earned. So the select board could give the directive of only use 90%, so there's still a little bit of interest growing. I think that was the point of this, so that if the select board felt that we were being too aggressive, we could have a discussion about what would be good in terms of saving versus using the funds now.
That's a good point. Thank you.
On that point, can I just add one thing? So if we wanted to, like, just kind of make it a little more conservative, I, I was thinking if we added the words maybe instead of is in this sentence, like, the interest calculated is unavailable revenue source. If you just, maybe, I'm thinking for future select boards who've forgotten long, long from this conversation that we're having now, if the interest calculated may be unavailable revenue resource, basically, just to give a little bit of, I don't know, it just seems a little bit like, this is an option, you know, the 100%, the 90%, it could be 90%, it could be 7%. It's just a little bit softer way of saying, this is an option, you don't have to do it, you could just keep making lots of money from compound interest just for the future, essentially. Maybe an available revenue source instead of is.
The current policy says the maximum balance shall be 10% of the general fund operating revenues. We're over that. So what does that mean? Does that mean we ought to be going by policy to the town meeting and saying, we propose to move that excess into free cash? Right. I mean, it's not like it's in the stock market that could drop 20% tomorrow, it's invested in CDs and other, you know, certain money.
I, I wonder if, I mean, yeah, maybe that is what we want to do, but I, I wonder if this would be better ter, worded that the maximum balance or something like, we shall not put in any, make any deposits into the operational stabilization fund if it will get us in excess of 10%. Because in this case, we got there by interest, by compound interest, so.
Right.
I think, I think this covers that, Josh. It says the maximum balance shall be 10% with, that is the.
But we're above that, so what do you do now?
But we certainly aren't gonna put any more money into it.
Yeah, no, I, I understand that, but it doesn't.
But according to the policy, we should be moving money out of it.
Yeah, that's what I mean. If you read this in just black and white, it says, what do you do?
And, and that's kind of what we're talking about with overage and how much, but I will also point out that there must have been years, if I recall, that we were below the 5% maybe, and nothing, nothing bad happens, like, to be over 10% is no more egregiously negative than being under. Both are out of policy. It's not, you know what I'm saying? It's not like there's, if you said, if you're over 10%, you have to put it all into free cash, you would, you should be just as stringent in those emergency periods when we have to go below because of some stressor.
This does say what happens when you get too low. It says you have to come up with a plan to replenish it.
Okay. Well, you, you could say like, you have to replenish it till the 5%. We don't, we don't do that. So, and, and I made the point, of course, what to do with extra money, but I'm saying that I don't think we, we can do any, we can do whatever we want as a town, right?
But I would argue that the current policy says that we should be proposing to move money above 10%. And next year, when we get interest and we're bu, still above 10%, we should be proposing we move that. So in other words, we don't need the, I shouldn't say we don't need the, the suggested change here, but Andrew recommended that we say upon reaching the target balance of 10%. If that said 10% instead of seven and a half percent in the yellow there, we already have that.
Yeah.
Because we have a maximum balance of 10% as a policy.
That was, and.
So, so just delete this and let's say we're above our maximum policy, we have every expectation that interest rates are gonna continue for the current year, we ought to be taking, making, making a, you know, a warrant article in town meeting to, with a two-thirds vote, to move this into free cash so that the town can make use of it, however we see fit.
But I, I think the point of this is if we go, we have some cushion to get down to seven and a half percent, right?
Yes. Based on, based on the policy that states interest shall accrue in the fund, the target balance shall be seven and a half percent of general funds operating revenues. I did not originally use the maximum balance because I thought that would be too restrictive.
I, I hear you, Ian, but we, it's not where we want to go with this, it's where we are today. We are above 10%. So whether we change this policy or not, we, we are, we would be within the policy to recommend to move everything above 10% out of that fund.
I think it's a different issue.
I think the point, though, Mark, that, that we're trying to make is, I don't want to touch the principal balance. I would much rather touch the interest that we've earned. And if we did touch the interest that we earned, we would fall under that 10%.
Why don't you want to touch the, the principal balance? What if it, what if it was at 18%?
I mean, I think, these are two different things, right? Like, so this is about if we're at 7.5% that we can use the interest, right? And then what we're also talking about is the fact that we're over 10% right now and moving those funds, not just necessarily the interest, just those funds out.
Let me make a suggestion. We all, we all kind of agree, this is great, it's embarrassing, riches, we have more money than we thought, et cetera, but basically.
It's the wrong place, though.
Right, understand. So what you, I think what we should do here is, like, for the next meeting, talk about the actual proposal hand with the interest. But if one of us wanted to, one could basically make an article any one time, we don't have to necessarily even make a policy, anytime it goes over 10%, and that's restrictive in itself for future select boards, they, that, you know, over 10%, you gotta do this. What, at any point, we could say, let's move it to free cash. Could we? Or is that not an unexpected event? Like, let's say this year we said, we're $500,000 over the 10% target, let's move that to free cash. Would that not be allowed because it's not an emergency?
It's up to you guys, it's your policy.
So we could just do that.
The policy already says the maximum is 10%.
So then we could just, you could just make a proposal and save, get the two-thirds vote. At, any year, you don't have to make a policy necessarily.
If we're over 10%, that's correct.
We could do that.
Right.
Right, so these are like two different kind of.
Relator.
One is, can we use the interest every year if we're over seven and a half percent?
Yeah.
The other is, can we transfer any money over 10%? Those are the two different.
I'm just thinking, if we have, it's eight million dollars in there now?
Give or take, yeah.
Memorial Day storm and, a snowstorm, and it takes like, and we have to spend two million bucks to clean that up.
Yeah.
We still have seven and a half percent, so then we can still use that interest, we have that flexibility. And so I, I think this is, that's my thinking on it. 10% is a different bargain.
I know that we've talked about it a long time, but can I just ask, Ian, what did you, when you said, you know, as long as the, as long as it's seven and a half percent, then you can use the interest, your opposition to it being 10%, which would be more conservative, just in this specific little conversation, not with.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I mean, would you be opposed to it being 10%? We're way over it. It's, it's a relative, it's immaterial for this moment right now that we're in. But I think that one could argue that, you know, seven, seven and a half percent, you're giving up the interest, well, it wouldn't be better to be closer to 10%, you know?
I, I guess to, to.
If you can get there.
To answer your question.
For the future.
The, the reason that I wanted to go with seven and a half percent is I did some projections onto where the stabilization fund would be if we took the interest out of it. And in 2026, we would be at about 9.7%. So we're at 10.91 now, we would be at about 9.7%. So in one year.
By doing this policy, we're gonna drop significantly because the budget will go up.
Also, if it was 10%, if we ever spent any money, we would get down to 10%. And the whole point of this is to have money to, to spend. It's not really to gain interest.
It's the interest.
It's not, no, no. The point of the operational, operating stabilization fund is to have money for an emergency.
Yes.
It is not to generate interest. And so we have to have some flexibility to be able to spend that money and.
Of course. What I'm talking about, though, is if the target, so the more money we have, to your point, the more money we have in the operational stabilization fund, the better. I'm actually arguing the same point, that we're saying that we can use the interest if it gets to seven and a half percent. I'm only suggesting, what if we made that, it has, we can't do the, use the interest unless it's 10%?
That, that's, that's what I'm saying. Then this is pointless because it will never, if we're not putting any, any more money, then there will, we're not gonna stay at 10%.
Right, okay.
I, I think, I, I see what you're saying. I just, that is the conservative approach, but I think that comes back to Erica's time value of money.
Sure.
And also, sometimes we just have to spend the money.
Sure.
And if we're, if we have this at 10%, it may never come up again. We just, we had a freakishly high.
Yeah.
Interest rate for a few years.
Yeah, Lynn?
So just one other consideration, just so that you have the other side of this. This was created, this 10% maximum was created in 20, 2009, it looks like. The cost of an emergency now is much higher than what it was in 2009. And so just, it, it's possible that we may actually want to increase this to 12% or 14 or 15. I mean, one culvert failure on Long Meadow Street is gonna almost wipe out this amount. So just to keep in consideration that 10% really isn't very much anymore.
What amount?
The, the eight million dollars.
One culvert?
I mean, it could, depending on the size of it. Stuff just is obscenely expensive now. I mean, it's almost two million dollars to take down the old DPW. Just the, the cost of everything is, is so high that when you created this, 10% was a lot.
But Lynn, my, my recollection was we used percentage instead of dollars because we thought that inflation proved it. In other words, your budget goes up because of inflation, and so this 10% also, also increases as a, that, that was kind of the thought, as opposed to saying, yeah, it's got two million dollars in this fund, then two million dollars doesn't buy what it used to buy.
Right. And I think, I think you're right. I guess what I should be saying then is, a cost of an emergency is gone up, and that's where.
Cost of emergency went from 2% of operating budget to now it's 5% of your operating budget. Right. Okay.
So just to, something to consider, that's all. Not to think that you're pressured to do something with money that's over 10%. Just maybe it's okay to have, maybe you should up that threshold.
Okay. Can, can, do we know what other communities or state guidance is for stabilization fund balances?
I could look into that for you.
Why don't we send it to Erica?
Absolutely. We looked at, we looked at other, at other towns, it's all, and we actually compared it to bond ratings to see whether or not it had any impact on bond ratings. And you have all sorts of, of levels. You have people who have a lot more than we do, you have people who have half of what we do as a percentage of their revenue. It's all over the place and it's in no way correlated to bonding, which was what we were looking at at the time. So I don't think there's a specific state one. Mr. O'Shea informed us many times that the state just changed so that they could use the interest out of the state reserve fund. So I believe they just put a state law in to be able to do that. But I would say, I mean, I agree with you that the cost, Lynn, is going up, but when I asked Ian to tell me when we'd ever pulled money out of it, I think it was once and it might have been the, the ice storm.
2011, September.
Yeah, but that's the only time you've ever taken money out of it.
We pulled money out in the fall for mold remediation and, what was the other one?
Storm cleanup.
Storm cleanup. Yeah, that freak storm.
Stabilization fund.
No, that we did, yeah. That was the only two times.
This summer, we had the weather event on Farmington and we had significant mold in schools that we had to emergency remediate.
280,000.
It was 314 for the mold. But three times in 23 years. Or, no, what was the, 2011 storm, sorry.
Nice to have it when you need it, though.
Yep, yep.
Okay, so I think we've got some stuff to chew on and we'll come back at our next meeting. Do, do Dan and Erica have anything else that they want to add? Dan?
No, no, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Erica? No? Okay, thank you so much for joining us, Erica. Really appreciate it. Thank you. All right. Great. Let's, yes, let's just bring this back in our next meeting, continue discussion. I, I feel like we're making progress here and I think we should be able to hopefully come to some consensus at our next meeting. Next, we have the, the MSBA accelerated repair program, not for center school roof, but for the center school windows. And this is a statement of interest. Lynn, do you want to speak to this one?
Yes, so similar to what we did with the statement of interest for the roof, we are trying now for the windows. So this is the Massachusetts School Building Authority Accelerated Repair Program. The windows are now at an age where they qualify for the program. We plan to submit to try to get us in the process there. And this is the required application step. The school committee also voted, and now it's up to the select board to vote, and then we will submit the application in March when it's due.
Great. Any comments, anything on this one?
Quick question. What, what's the match, what's the state share and, you know, should this get approved?
They don't, we don't have that information upfront. We, we won't know until we get in and start moving through.
So if we get in, we still have to go through.
And then we gotta figure out how we fund our share.
Oh, yes.
Stabilization fund.
Okay, great. Anything else? Oh, yeah, sorry, Josh.
When is our mess? My, I hear from teachers all the time there. So this would be a, a big boon to the town if we can get this.
Does this require any action on our part?
Yeah, you need to.
It's a specific, it's a specific vote attached to it.
Specific language in the second document.
Right.
So I, yeah, we take that vote.
Yeah, there, there's language. Do you need it?
I'm resolved, having convened an open meeting on February 24th, 2025, prior to the SO, Statement of Interest Submission Closing Date, the Select Board of Long Meadow, in accordance with its charter, bylaws and ordinances, has voted to authorize the superintendent to submit to the Massachusetts School Building Authority the Statement of Interest Form dated March 14th, 2025 for the center school located at 837 Long Meadow Street, which describes and explains the following deficiencies and priority categories for which an application may be submitted to the Massachusetts School Building Authority in the future. Five replacement, renovation or modernization of school facility systems such as roofs, windows, boilers, heating and ventilation systems to increase energy conservation and decrease energy-related costs in a school facility. This statement of interest is specifically intended for the replacement of windows and doors at the center school in Long Meadow and hereby further specifically acknowledges that by submitting the Statement of Interest Form, the Massachusetts School Building Authority in no way guarantees the acceptance or the approval of an application, the awarding of of an application, the awarding of a grant, or any other funding commitment from the Massachusetts School Building Authority, or commits the Long Meadow School District to filing an application for funding with the Massachusetts School Building Authority.
Second.
Any further discussion?
Josh, can you repeat that?
That was passed out at the end.
Mike?
Mr. Hamavati?
Yes.
Dr. Lamb?
Yes.
Mr. Gold?
Yes.
Mr. Levine?
Yes.
Mr. Zerko?
Yes.
Okay, great. And then, so this looks like some further action by the town clerk and the chair of the school committee?
Yeah, well, we will get the SOI signed by all who are needed to sign, and then I think we just do a certified vote to the MSBA.
Perfect.
Certified, true, true copy attest of the vote from the town clerk.
Okay.
I'll work on coordinating that.
Great, thank you. And then we've got one-day liquor license applications.
I just got a question. Do these get approved by us and then go to the state, to the ABCC?
Not one day.
No? Okay.
Yeah.
I get, we're, they're missing checkboxes, and I, and I just, I don't know. It might happen every month, but I just noticed it today. Like, it doesn't say if liquor is served or sold, person's under 21, attendance, yes or no. We should just make sure they're filled in, in case we ever get audited or something.
Yeah, I know, I know the last couple were, these ones, what I posted, I may have just missed some oversight there, so typically, they are served, not sold.
I'm sure they are, and I know it's...
Yeah, no, I see what you're saying. We should...
Beer and wine, like, it's not checked, so...
Yeah.
Oh, and the second application?
And the first one too. So I think that that, maybe it's not showing up on the scan.
I think the first one's got them, but the second one doesn't.
I think that's her signature. Oh, no, yeah, I, there's different ones missing on other, on...
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so I, I'm fine with this. I know how these events work, but I just ask Mary Beth to fill them in, just make sure they're complete.
So do I.
Okay, great.
Otherwise, I'll move we approve a one-day liquor license application for the LACCF for events on March 5th, 2025, and March 20th, 2025.
Second. Great, thanks. Any further discussion? Mike?
Mr. Hamavati?
Yes.
Dr. Lamb?
Yes.
Mr. Gold?
No.
Mr. Levine?
Yes.
Mr. Zerko?
Yes.
Great, thank you. And then correspondence, any comments about correspondence, Mark?
Couple of things. There's a Comcast letter February 14th that talks about their service interruptions and all this kind of stuff. Is there any chance we can put that, it had some information specifically on contacting Comcast that was on pages eight, pages nine and 10. Any chance we can put that on our website, just so people can see how to, and I don't know the appropriate place. Because people call from time to time saying, how do I contact Comcast? And this would be helpful. The other thing is, there's a, there was a copy of the nominating papers in, public relations, or, or press release in there, and I think that, I suspect it was caught by now, but there was an opening for a school committee for one year.
Yes.
That's not on the, that document.
The one that I posted, there was probably the original email. It was amended shortly after.
Oh, okay, right.
Anything else? All right, I move that we adjourn.
Second.
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? Mike?
Mr. Hamavati?
Yes.
Dr. Lamb?
Yes.
Mr. Gold?
Yes.
Mr. Levine?
Yes.
Mr. Zerko?
Yes.
All right, great. Thank you all so much. Appreciate it.
Thanks, guys.